Today is our work session, Tuesday, May 20, 2014, Board of County Commissioners, Pickens County, Colorado. We are going to go into a special meeting to do some abatement hearings. We've got eight items on our agenda. I will, just to make sure we're official here, take a motion to go into a special meeting for the purpose of abatement hearings.
So moved.
Second?
You have a first and a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. And Larry Flint is here to help us with the abatements.
Yes, so we've kind of got two groups. The first group are procedural abatements where the amount of the refund is greater than $10,000. And so statutorily, even though we have recommended approval for those abatements, they need to be brought before the board. And so I don't know the degree to which you want to discuss the individual abatements or consider them as a group or how you guys would like to proceed with those. I mean, I'm happy to give a brief.
Yeah, well, let's tackle them one by one. And basically, we did get a packet with information on why the decision was made between the applicant and in your office. So if there's no questions on item number one, which is the Thunderball development, I will accept a motion on that.
I would make a motion to uphold the assessor's recommendation for approval.
Second?
We have a first and a second. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
The next is the Windstar Five Valley Farm. Again, the same situation. It was an abatement that came into an agreement between the applicants and our staff. It's over $10,000, so it has to be approved by the Board of County Commissioners. If there are any questions, I'll take questions. If not, I will take a motion. Steve?
Larry, in this one, it talks about the owner getting, seeking an exemption. Is that an agricultural exemption that they're seeking or what?
No, prior to the purchase of this property, the entire property had been classified as tax exempt because it was operated as a nonprofit. At the point that the current owner purchased the property, I can't, they bought it on April 29, 2013, so it was exempt up to the date of sale. And then when it was transferred to a private entity that was no longer a tax exempt entity, it became taxable at that point for the balance of the year. So when we assigned a value to the property, it was prorated so that it was exempt up to the point of sale and then taxable for the balance, the balance of the year. Now, they have since, I believe, filed a petition to the state to renew the exempt status based on the nonprofit use as Rocky Mountain Institute is the one that's currently occupying, you know, the office building out there. But we have not heard back from the state. So that exempt application is pending, but we don't have, we don't have a response yet from the state. So for this abatement, it was a question of how the value should be allocated between the taxable portion and the exempt portion, you know, based on the point of sale for that particular year. And then what happened is they protested during the normal appeal process, but because when a value is prorated, it is, it's kind of an override function. So one override function overrides the other override function. And so when we transferred the protest values, it did not override the previous override. So then at this point, when they got their tax bills, I go, whoa, wait, wait. So then we had to come back in and manually change the values to what was agreed upon, you know, during the protest period, you know, in 2013. So it's basically a technical issue as far as, you know, how the value did not transfer when it should have transferred.
I don't have any problem with what this abatement is asking for. It's the, my problem is with them asking for an exempt status. If they're only asking for it on the 30 acres and the, or on the building that is being used by RMI, that would be one matter. They're asking for the whole property, most of which is privately used for agriculture now.
Correct. And I think that's how we ended up, is that the balance of the land was classified as agricultural. And then the 30 acre parcel at the bottom where Rocky Mountain Institute and the building currently is, I think that's the portion that they're requesting the exempt status for.
Okay.
Further questions? I'll entertain a motion.
I'd move to approve the petition for the abatement.
To uphold the assessor's.
For the Windstar Valley Ranch.
Thank you.
Second?
First and a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Next is the Maroon Creek Lot 13.
The next two, both of the two Maroon Creek lots were purely valuation issues. Appraiser in the office, Dan Popisch, dealt with these during the regular appeal process, did cite inspections and felt that because of the location and the topography that these lots were warranted an adjustment in terms of value. So again, the sole reason that they're before today is merely that the amount of the adjustment is greater than $10,000. But the assessor's office recommends approval for both the first one, which is the Maroon Lot 13 LLC, and then the next one, which is George and Spitlana Chapewski. So I don't know if you want to deal with.
Are there any, the first one, we'll deal with first, I guess the Maroon Creek Lot 13. Are there any questions on that? Seeing none, I'll entertain a motion.
Make a motion to approve the assessor's recommendation for approval.
Second? Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
The next is the Chip, this, Aspen Highlands Village, PUD. There you go. Block G, Lot 2. If there are any questions, I'll take questions. If not, I'll take a motion.
Take a motion to uphold the assessor's recommendation for approval.
Second? First and a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All right, now we're on to the one where we need to call somebody. So let's try to get them on the phone, and if they can't, we'll move on to the other aspects and get back to it.
And just in terms of the conference call thing, is that location okay where it's?
We can certainly try it there, or we can see if we can get to where that notebook is, if possible, but might be a little bit better. Looks like, can you help her with that cord, Steve?
Yeah, it should go right through there, I think. Just twist it a little bit.
That's good, you can run it.
Which one is this for? Which one are we doing now?
This is for account number R003063. It's the Florida company, Wood Run One, Lot 41.
Okay, great, thanks.
So if it's okay with you guys, we can just dial him.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, just do nine to the outside.
Yes, hi, this is Scotty with the Pickens County Assessor's Office and Board of County Commissioners. Is Will Wiggins available?
Sure. Hold on.
Can you guys hear that okay?
I can.
How, I guess you'll tell him how you want the order to go.
Is it Will Wiggins?
Wiggins.
Wiggins.
W-I-G-G-I-N-S.
Turn that up a little bit. Larry, is it Fight or?
Fight, yeah.
I'm sorry.
Yeah.
We call him worse.
Yeah.
I told him I didn't think it was going to be until closer to 11:00, so.
Well, if he's not available, we can move to Snowmass Club and the Motherlode. Are representatives going to be joining us for those or?
No.
Not for the Motherlode?
The, that one actually was withdrawn because you saw in the newspaper that it recently sold.
Yeah.
And so the seller was the one who had filed the abatement. So evidently, once, once they cashed out, then it ceased to be an issue, so they withdrew the abatement petition, you know, at that point.
On the sale of the property, don't they have to pay past due taxes?
Yeah, and the other thing that, that I don't know that they were aware when they originally filed.
That was somebody's computer.
When they filed the petition for an abatement, is they were looking at the value of the condominium that was created from the bothering parcel.
Yeah.
But the year in question that they had filed the abatement for, as of January 1 of 2012, the Motherlode still existed as just a multi-use building. It hadn't been condominiumized yet.
Yeah.
And so.
Well, that was kind of the confusion.
Yeah, yeah.
That was condominiumized and when you.
And so, and so the square footage attributed to the basement, when it was a standalone building, was much bigger because it included all the storage areas and et cetera, et cetera. Whereas when it was condominiumized, the square footage of the basement dropped by about a third. And so they were thinking that the value should be attributed to the smaller space when in fact it was prorated from the entire basement prior to the condominium being platted. And so it was kind of apples and oranges as far as, you know, what they were looking at. And then as I say, once the sale came through, they felt like it.
Hello, this is Will.
Hey, Will.
Will, Mr. Wiggins, this is Rob Itner, the chairman of the Board of County Commissioners. We're going through the abatement hearings and we've come to your agenda item. I hope this is a good time to take your, take a little time from you.
Yes, I'm sorry for the delay there.
As I said, I'm the chairman of the meeting. The way that the hearing will be run is we'll have a presentation from our staff. We'll have questions from the Board of County Commissioners. Joining us is Commissioner Steve Child, Commissioner Michael Osley, and Commissioner George Newman and myself, Rob Itner. And then we'll have a presentation from you if you want to add to your, to the hearing and questions for you. And then we'll bring it back to the Board of County Commissioners for further discussion, questions, and determination.
Okay, is there a chance for rebuttal after the district's testimony or after the assessor's testimony?
Yeah, the treasurer's testimony goes first. So your presentation is after the treasurer's testimony.
Assessors.
Assessors' testimony, sorry. So Larry, are you taking this or?
No, these are, these are both for Scotty, yeah.
So the first one is the R003063. It's at 69 Forest Lane. It's a house up in the Snowmass, in the Wood Run area that's got 4,690 square feet. It was built in 1969 and there was a complete demolition and remodel done in the year 2000. It's a very good quality construction and it's got a garage and it does not have access to the ski area, but it's in a location that makes it easily accessible. I have put together four comparables that are up in the Wood Run area. The first one is at 39 Stanton Lane. This house is a little bit smaller at 4,570 square feet. I've made an adjustment there for, a positive adjustment to, to bring it up to the, to the subject property. It does not have a finished basement area, so I've made an adjustment there, a positive adjustment of 195,000. I'm just going to kind of round out these numbers here just for speed in the, in the process. And it is excellent quality, which is better than the subject home, so an adjustment, a negative adjustment was made for that. The garage is, is larger and it's got a $50,000 adjustment there. So with the adjustments, the sale, the property was sold in September of 2011 for a sale price of $3,740. The time adjusted price was $3,447. With my adjustments, it brings it down to $3,367,500. The second comparable is at 41 Hidden Lane. That is basically two roads down, closer to the village and also right on the ski run. It was sold in September of 2011 for $4,725, time adjusted to $4,355. I've made adjustments for land. It is a better, better lot because of its location right on the ski run. And I have made adjustment for the age of 1985, the effective age. I've made also adjustments for the living area, it's slightly bigger, so it's going to have a negative adjustment. And it does not have the finished basement, so I'm giving it a positive adjustment to bring it up to the subject. And a slight adjustment for the garage. So with those adjustments off the sale price, the value is $3,990. Sale number three at 835 Wood Road, sold September, or October, I'm sorry, of 2011 for $4,880, time adjusted to $4,539. No land adjustment because it's considered comparable. A slight adjustment on the size of the, of the property, of the, the living area of 58,000. I did not make an adjustment in the effective age because it's 2003 versus 2000. So to me, my opinion is that, you know, a three-year difference is not going to make that much difference in, in the value. It is an excellent quality and the adjustment for the garage is 50,000. So that comes out to a value of $4,626. The fourth property is at 166 Edgewood Lane. That was sold in June of 2011 for $2,500, time adjusted to $2,243. I have a land adjustment of 400,000 because it would be considered superior. It is right off of Edgewood Road. You walk right across the road to Adams Avenue. So it's got really close ski access with Adams Avenue being right there. It's considerably smaller, so it has adjustment there. The age is, it's 1978 versus 2000, so I've got an adjustment there. And again, positive adjustment for the finished basement area and positive adjustment for the quality of a 12 versus the very good, or good versus the very good. So that brings that up to $3,079. I don't know, I've got a color map if that's going to make it easier for you guys to see this. I can, I can give you. Just gives you a little bit better location for the comparables versus the sale property. The sale property is that top one, R003063. It's at the top of the subdivision and then the comparables are lower down in the subdivision, which brings them lower to the base village and more accessible to the skiers. But I think that the adjustments that I've made for the locations and the, and the site will, they're, they're addressed in my comparable sales grid. The house is, it's quite a nice house. It's got walnut wood floors and cabinetry and stainless steel, high-end appliances. It's got three fireplaces, a hot tub, a wine cabinet, jacuzzi tub, steam rooms, wet bar, caretaker unit. It's, it's really quite a nice, nice property. And I think that with its, with its value being actually a little bit lower than the average or the median, that I think that the value that we have on it is well-supported by its position in, in the range of values.
Are there questions at this time, George?
Thank you. I was a little confused on the, your summary. So I'll just read this. The data provided with the abatement consists of an analysis of non-sale properties. That's not, is that from you or is that from the petitioner?
I think that was from the petitioners.
That was the information.
So.
He sent both sale properties and non-sale properties.
Okay, so what you're use, what you are using for an appraisal methodology is the sales or market approach.
Yes.
It seems like, and we'll hear from the petitioner, what he's looking at using his methodology is a cost approach.
I can't answer.
At least that's how I read this.
Well, and I think Mr. Wiggins will give a more thorough explanation of how he's done what he's done.
Okay, so, but, but do you ever use the cost approach? Let's say you didn't have comparable sales. Did you then use a cost approach for your methodology?
The Colorado State statutes have, they decree that we use a sales approach. And if we have to go back an additional six months or an additional six months after that, we still use the, the sales comparison, the market approach. So there wouldn't be a situation with this when we would use a cost approach.
So is that mandated by the state?
Mr. Wiggins, my name is Larry Feit and I am the chief appraiser for the assessor's office, so I'm just chiming in here. The question that George has asked is actually answered, it's part of the actual state constitution. There was an amendment that was passed in the early 90s that stipulates that for residential properties, the value should be determined solely by the market approach. And so the cost approach or the income approach, while may be available, you know, to a private appraiser, you know, for loan purposes, we can only use the market approach, you know, for property tax valuation purposes.
So then when I get my tax bill, I actually have a, separated out, I have a land value and then I have a value on my structure. And that's how you're basing what my taxes are. So that would be a cost approach, wouldn't it?
No, and again, statutorily, when you appeal your valuation, technically you can't appeal just the land or just the improvements. We do break the value out into land and improvements just because that's how our valuation process works. But as far as appeals are concerned, you can only appeal the total value of the property because you're not selling the building or the land independent of each other, and so you have to focus on the total value of the property. But from, I was just going to say, from just how we establish the values, in a nutshell, the first thing that we do is go throughout the county and establish land value for all of the underlying land. And then we go back on a neighborhood by neighborhood basis and add value to the improvements based on the improved sales such that land plus improvements equals the value that properties are selling for. And once we've got the model calibrated so that we're matching the sale properties in a given neighborhood, then that same model then is applied to all of the non-sale properties in, in the same neighborhood. When it comes to an appeal, we do more of a traditional comparable sales approach the way, exactly what Scotty has done whereby we take actual improved sales and then make adjustments to account for the differences between the site and the location, the size and the quality of the homes, and make specific adjustments to the specific comps. But, but the original value was established via a mass appraisal model, which doesn't go into that level of detail.
And I do have the, the Colorado State statute that requires all county assessors to value residential real property solely by the market approach. And that statute is 39-1-1035A8A. So that's how we are required by the state.
Okay, thank you.
Further questions of staff? Seeing none, I will go to Mr. Wiggins if you'd like to make a presentation at this time.
Thank you. And thank you for your explanation. Panel members there, or board members, just, just for your information, I am certainly familiar with the Assessors Reference Library in Colorado and the statutes that are applied as I've had a number of years of experience working in Rowell County as an appraiser too for Rowell County Assessors. So I'm certainly familiar with the laws. I'm also familiar kind of with the differences of the way that Texas runs things. We're not going to write any laws here today, but they are, as you guys all probably know, they are, they are different, different states, no doubt. But listen, the approach that is used by the, by the assessor is common in all of assessments. It's a modified cost approach. So in fact, they do establish the land value and they have a schedule for improvements based on quality and age, et cetera. And all of these things drive the improvement value. They then calibrate the total value to the, to the market based on sales indication using ratio analysis and other, other mass appraisal standards. So what, what we have here in Texas is, is built into the law, is an insured fair treatment. It's constitutional that people be taxed fairly. And I'm not, I'm not suggesting any longer, although I used to, that Colorado uses a scapegoat as the market value, but I still think that we all agree that taxation should be, should be fair. So no doubt on the market value that that's, that that's how it should be approached. What I, what I'm suggesting with this other grid is not, so often you see in fee appraisals where sales are limited, that we can use an indication of value from another appraisal. And so what, all I was trying to suggest was that if it's reasonable, that the entire population or every taxpayer was, was noticed their values based on this model. And this model was set to appraise values as of the first of the year, which is what we're trying to, trying to establish here. And these were certified appraisals. Why not consider these appraised values as indications of market value and use the market approach? So it's, it's really just the difference of, one was a transaction in the market, the other was an appraisal done by your assessor. It's the same market approach to appraisal, however, and that is the concept. So, so that's what I wanted, the biggest concern here is that, you know, the reason that my clients have, you know, have contacted us is, is that, you know, let's be, let's be honest, we all walk around our neighborhoods and we, and you know, we know our neighbors and we know what we're all getting taxed at. And, and I guess they were sort of the, the joke at the party, if you will, in that, in that when you look around, and I'll get into, to the exhibits I presented based on appraised values, but what I question, or what I need to know or be able to explain, however, to my clients is that, is that yes, when, when all else is the same, why then is the area improvement or the improvement index, as I call it, call it just the improvement value per square foot, so much lower for these properties that are so comparable? But I'll get into that. But I just wanted to explain that, first of all, I'll, you know, establish that and I am familiar with the law, so, so, you know, I don't know that we need to revisit that, but I would constitute that when I, when I present this evidence on the other appraised values, that I'll be asking direct questions about this approach that they used to notice and how these schedules could be so vastly different. So in the meantime, you know. So in the meantime, you know, we agreed on two comps on this grid with Wood and Stanton. I believe that those, that those are comparable sales. I have a question real quickly for the assessor. I don't understand, in comp number four, for instance, on the effective year bill, you could see it, this is, let's call it a depreciation adjustment, a $260,300 for comp four. Okay, that's, that's an adjustment up. And then on comp two, it's a $461,700. And am I right to assume that, well, you can see that there's a seven-year difference. So if all else were the same, the 1978 should be adjusted higher. But I presume that the answer is because it's of an inferior quality as opposed to comp number two, which was Excel. Is that, is that an excellent, is that right?
When, when we do the, the adjustment for the age, basically what we're doing is taking the age of the subject and plugging it into the comparable to see what it would be if it were that age. Now, it also, the model has to take into consideration, you know, the square footage, the quality, you know, several different factors that will, will come into play when the model calculates the difference and gives us the number of what it would be.
Okay. And that's what I thought was going on, and I just need to confirm that it sounds like, and again, I just want to confirm that effectively what you're doing is supplanting the age of the subject into the comp list, if you will, or the comps list of attributes, and seeing what the difference is in the total value in order to quantify that adjustment. Is that right?
That's correct.
Okay. Then, then board members and assessor, what I, what I am going to struggle with for the rest of these proceedings will be, and what I want to remain, in spite of whatever the determination is today, is that I believe that we're doubling up on adjustments. Because if we're going to look up, if we're going to look down, say, look, look at the list of adjustments, and there's another one, let's just stay on comp two for a second, where we have a negative adjustment for the excellent quality, and then we've got a negative adjustment for the living area or size. It's my understanding that all of these things are being duplicated as we implant, say, the depreciation into the, into the construction, into the, sorry, the comparable system and looking at the total value difference. Because as stated, it is also considering all these other things, size, quality, right? Just to quantify that difference for depreciation, it is, it is taking into account all these other factors. Well, then we're coming back on it and taking into account those same factors again.
No, we're not, because when we consider those other factors, we're bouncing that effective age back to the true effective age. When we're considering the square footage.
I guess, I don't understand. Could you help me out with that? I guess I don't understand.
Well, I think what Scotty is saying is that the same manner in which we plugged in, you know, the, the adjusted effective age of the subject into the comp, similarly we do a, you know, we plug in the subject quality into the comp and see what the resulting value change is. But each is done as kind of a separate transaction, as it were, separate calculation, as opposed to just having all of the adjustments be additive, you know, one on top of the other.
Okay. Am I right when I say that the, in order to quantify the amount of that adjustments, let's just stay on depreciation or effective age, in order to quantify that, we have a beginning model value, then we input the subject's effective year of 2000 and we have an ending model value, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. And that quantity is what gets inserted into the depreciation line or the effective, effective age line, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. Then I'll maintain, we can, we can agree to disagree, but I'll maintain based on the testimony that, that yes, there are other factors driving that quantity, and therefore, in my opinion, I see duplicate adjustments. But with that aside, again, I'll just, I'll leave that, you know, let's, let's move on. I think I understand your position. But I believe, I believe too, just, just when you step back and look at the grand picture, that a seven-year delta of those two, first of all, you know, it's hard for me to believe. And I went up there skiing and I love, you know, love the Highlands. And so I spent two days at the Highlands, but, but then of course I had to get to work and, and checked out all these comps and all of my appraised value comps and, and did peek around and talked to some Realtors that were up there poking around. And it seems to me that, you know, these type of investments, and we deal a lot with, with high-end properties down here too, and I have represented plenty of properties in Stevo, but then once you get, once we're talking about, you know, this, this location, I believe it's okay to assume as, as what is typical, and that's what we need to consider here, is, you know, wet bars and jacuzzis are going to be inside of most of these homes. And if they are in a dilapidated condition at the time of purchase, they're going to be remodeled, no doubt. And so I don't have any issue with the, I'm not going to, I'm not going to attack the appraiser's opinion. I, you know, that's fine with me. But I, but I do want to establish that, that these amenities that constitute, say, you know, a given quality, that they can be found throughout of these type of homes. So, so it's hard for me to look at, between comp four and comp two, at a difference of seven years on the appraiser's opinion of seven-year effective year bill and see that the, that the older property is not being adjusted as much as the, as the newer or the 1985. So, so I struggle, you know, I don't have very much confidence in, in these upward adjustments. And we'll move on to my evidence. And the, the adjustment type that I use, if you look at my page, board members, is I only use the three sales and the two on Wood and Stanton, of course, are closest in size. I don't mean to discard sale number one, but for, for this discussion, I, you know, I don't want to give it much weight.
Mr. Wiggins, are we looking now at what's in our packet as page six, which has subject sale one, sale two, sale three in a, in a grid chart? The first one is the subject property of Forest Lane, the second one, the one that says sale one is Edgewood and then Stanton and, Stanton and Wood?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Just want to make sure we're looking at the right page with you.
Yes, sir, thank you. So both comps, comps two and three are quite a bit smaller than the subject and, but yet for the same land value, I do, I do find that even though they have the same, you know, effective, effective age, that the quality of construction is superior. And I asked early on, you know, while looking into these properties, what the, what the difference was or what the scheduled difference was between these excellence, these T-13s excellence and the very goods. And that is what I used, I don't recall what the specific percentage was or what was quoted to me, somewhere around 15, 20%. And, and so I just did a download of all the data in, in Pittkin and found the median value per square foot for the improvements and just applied a 20%. Now, now the assessor, he could probably quote you and I don't know that it's totally important, but I mean, if we need to get into it, I can tell you the differences exactly in what these base schedules are on, on the value per square foot. But anyway, what they quoted me was, was what I used to quantify this class adjustment. So all I did was isolate the land value on a per square foot basis and then back off for the difference in quality. There's not much of a difference in percent good, and that enabled me to basically have a new index per square foot for a very good. And I just reapplied it, and that's how I came up with, with, with these figures. So it's a very, I guess it's a very simplistic look at really just looking at all the improvements value on a per square foot of the main area listed by the assessor. So what I'm offering is that, you know, when I, when I look at this from outside in, I, I don't know so much about these schedules. And I don't know that it's important or it needs to be offered, but using the data that I've given, this is about as, as simple of an approach that I could offer for indications of value. And that's a big spread between 3.3 and 4.2. But again, the, with the, with the weight, as far as I'm concerned, on the Stanton sale, I just, I just question the difference, when you look at our net adjustments between Scotty's or the assessor's submission of these two sales, 39 Stanton and Wood, I believe we had, they had a net adjustments on there that were, that were vastly different than mine. And so it does, it does make, you know, I do need to sort of investigate further or, you know, call into question how we're quantifying these things. And I was, I suspected that, like I say, that it may be doubling up, that if they get me once on, on depreciation because of a difference in quality, then they can't make an adjustment again on quality. So that, that's what I'd offer is, is what I'm struggling with.
Mr. Wiggins, let me ask you a question at this point, if that's okay. In your spreadsheet, you've got your, your interpretation of, of the comparable properties at 2.4 million, 3.3 million, and 4.2 million, is that correct? Those are the numbers that are on the bottom of your spreadsheet?
Yeah, yes, that's correct.
And those are with your calculations, yet in your application, which would indicate that compared to your property, the subject property, that it would be somewhere within that range, yet you're arguing a 2.8 million valuation. How do you, how do you come up with a 2.8 million when you're comparing it to properties with adjustments that you've made that are 3.3 million and 4.2 million? Two that are substantially higher than that.
Where's the 2.8? You referenced the 2.8.
Well, it says, in our, in our summary, it says the owner's agent has requested a valuation of 2.8.
Sonia's letter as well.
Oh, 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 wow.
That's the valuation that you're requesting.
Right, right.
So I'm, I'm asking how you justify a 2.8 valuation that you are recommending us to approve when you are comparing your property in your calculations to be compared to, with adjustments, other properties that range from 2.4. I get it that that one's below, but there is a 3.3 and a 4.2 also compared to it.
Yeah, I understand. Thank you for clarifying. But first of all, I haven't got, I haven't engaged in any discussions yet about the comparable appraised values, and that is my primary concern. All I wanted to touch on first was the quantity of adjustments that the assessor is offering. I wanted to illuminate the board to the fact that I believe that the assessor is using double adjustments, right? And then number two is really look at the difference. So all I wanted to establish first of all is that the difference, take, take 835 Wood on my, on my sale comp number three. 835 Wood sold at the time adjusted at 4.5, and I've got it adjusted down to 4.2, approximately $300,000 difference. The assessor on 835 Wood has the sale, has the time adjusted sale price of 4.5, but he's actually adjusting up. So the, the indicated value is 4.6. So that's a $400,000 delta where I'm going down and he's going up. And I'm saying, okay, then I do need to sort of take a closer look at these, these adjustments. And so all I was trying to call your attention to, panel, was, was the fact that I disagreed sort of with how the assessor is calculating those adjustments, and I believe that they're doubled up. Listen, my 2.8 indication comes from looking at other appraised values, right? This is the analogy I gave you about the, about the.
Okay, so your, your 2.8 evaluation comes solely from non-sale properties, appraised values?
Yeah, these, the indications of market value that I'm using for my 2.8 indication of value are coming from the assessor's appraised values.
Which is your next spreadsheet.
The market value. Now definitively, as we know, as the assessor stated, Colorado law commands the market approach. I'm using the market approach. The difference here is that we have a limited availability of sales that have a variance of indicated value from 2.2 to 4.5. And when, when my client is the one calling me saying, I'm the one getting taken here, all my neighbors are valued lower, I say, well, those are market indications of value too. The approach to appraisal, there's three approaches, right? And cost, income, and market. The approach that I'm offering you here is a market approach. It's just that the indicated values that I'm basing these adjustments off of come from the appraised values of the assessor, which is, which is an indication of market as required by law on the first of the year.
Do you have more to your presentation at this point, or should I field questions?
Well, yes, sir.
Yes.
Yes, sir. You know, I won't take you through all, all five sales here, but, but yeah, let's, I mean.
All five sales or all five appraisals?
Yeah, all, all five comps, I meant to say, excuse me.
Which are appraisals, not sales.
And, yes, and they are comparables, yes.
Okay. So we're on to the next spreadsheet then.
Yes, sir, on page seven.
Thank you. Go ahead.
Okay. So issue being primarily again with the, with the improvement value. If I, if I isolate, let's say, land value, or at least the closest one that I can get to is comps one, two, and four and five, those being 2.4 where the subject's land is at 2, 2 million. We make those adjustments right away to the $400,000. So I'm only looking at the improvement values of these, these other indications of market, right? I guess, again, the most relevant here is the Wood sale that's, that is in excellent condition. And we're making, on the other page, the assessor's making substantial adjustments to the tune of over a million dollars for the difference in quality when you add it up. And this is a 1995 property, and we're effective age of 2000, and they're, they're certainly a superior quality, and they're on the roll, they're valued at 3.7, so very, you know, very close to the subject. And the subject's supposed to be an inferior quality, and it's supposed to have inferior land, right? And so that, that is the type of investigation that I go through with, with each one of these comps. And I'm making the same adjustment across the board on all five of these, but these are all, all five of these are indications of market value to me or to anybody else. And we're using the, the market approach to, to, to give to an indicated value of 2.8 on the median. So that, so to answer your question, sir, that's, that's where my recommendation value came from.
Questions for the applicant?
I would just, just make a point from, from your original, your original note to us that you talked about the uniformity grid and the market value grid. It's probably just a typo, but just to correct it, you say that you've based your information provided to yourself by the Eagle County Assessor's Office in both cases. I'm sure you meant the Picken County Assessor's Office.
Yes, I meant the Picken County, yes, sir.
Yeah, I just want to correct that for the record.
I have a question for, for staff, either Scotty or Larry. Can you give a little bit more explanation why one wouldn't consider appraisals as a market value as he is interpreting these? Because it seems to me like he's looking at the Constitution as, as use a market value and then he's making the argument that, well, using appraisal values is using a market value.
Right.
And I'll just clarify that I was using the market approach. I just want to, I just want to be exact with my terminology.
Market approach, okay.
To appraisal, yes, sir.
And there have been court cases that have said that while uniformity and equitability is the goal of the tax code, absolute uniformity is neither required by statute or insinuated. And so absolute uniformity, particularly in light of appraisal, which is an opinion of value, is difficult if not impossible to achieve. The one thing that, that we have always been instructed from the Division of Property Taxation is that our value, much the same way a value's established for loan purposes, should be derived from actual sales and not necessarily the values of similarly situated properties. One of the things that Scotty did when she reviewed this is she looked at all of the values of properties on Forest Lane, and those values range from vacant land of 500,000, they range from 2.3 up to 4.3, with the majority of the values in that 3.3 to 3.5 range. And these are properties specifically on Forest Lane. The value of the subject property is established at 3.5. So whereas he has chosen comparable properties to evaluate the, the equity of values in the subdivision, they're from all over the subdivision. And so it's difficult to say that. And so it's difficult to say that they have accounted for the differences in location, views, topography, et cetera, et cetera, because they have, his selection of comparable homes are from all over the subdivision as opposed to the immediate area.
They have potentially picked and choose the ones that make their argument?
It's not really clear how they selected the ones that they chose to be used as comparisons.
Yeah.
That being said, we feel that the soundest estimate of value is derived from actual sales, because those are, that's money that's changing hands. And when adjustments are made, there may be some disagreement as to the size and the scope of the adjustments, but once a sale property has been adjusted to account for the differences between the sale property and the subject property, in my view, that's the best indicator of value. If you look at those three sales, the last two of which he highlighted, he came up with his own data of a range of value of 3.3 to 4.2. The value assigned to the subject property is 3.5, which is within that range. So I would say that his own analysis, by and large, it's not really clear how he came to the adjustments that he made for size and quality and the differences between the lots, et cetera, et cetera. But his own analysis generates a range of value that supports our value. So I would say that the combination of the sale analysis that Scotty performed, together with the sale analysis that Mr. Wiggins performed, that both of those point to a value that, for which our value is within, we're within that range. And so, again, that, in our view, you know, that's why we recommended that no further adjustment should be made.
And panel, just to clarify, I went into what the district calls as neighborhood code, and I found a close to size comps. So no doubt, I agree with regards to the sales that happened, the limited availability of sales that happened. If we found the perfect comps out there in the real estate transactional market, great, you know, we'd be able to use them. In that case, you know, then what would come into question is, how are we adjusting? How much dollar sign, you know, these 700,000 and 400,000 and all this amount of adjustments that the assessor's throwing out there, I just need to know, I mean, these are half a million dollar deltas. And so when I look into it, and I can't figure out a way that this depreciation or quality is being adjusted so much, you know, again, and then confirm that, yes, that what we're looking at is a total value difference that constitutes all of these other factors that we're then adjusting for again, right? Then I question the integrity of the adjustments, the quantity of those adjustments. But listen, that aside, I mean, I'll leave that for the board, you know, respectfully, but that's just how I, you know, that's just my opinion. My problem is that when I go out to find, yeah, so the sales are limited, you know, they're not available, but I'm certain that the Constitution supports fair taxation. And I know, I'm also certain that the IAAO standards command consistent capture, that your data specification and that the collection of your data inside your model has to be a consistent method. And so I'm allowed to consider then, are we being, are we treated, are we on the same schedules as everybody else, you know? Are we getting treated the same? And so the only way I can know that is to look at these other indications of value. But I am using the constitutionally supported approach to residential valuation by the ARL, by the Colorado law, Colorado statutes. It's just my indications of market value are coming from the rule. And, you know, I'm just saying in closing that, again, when you look at comps two and comp four, on my page seven, hold out everything else and just look at the improvement values. And there's, I mean, and even comp three, for instance, the improvement value on a good property, you know, is 200,000, they're giving it 200,000 on the value of a 5,600 size square foot home. And something even closer, comps two and five on page seven, the land value of these two comparable to 2.4, and the subject's 2 million. So that should be 400,000 right off the bat, off the top adjustment, just in the land. And let's just say that the sides are the same. I mean, they're close, but for these purposes, let's just say that they're the same. It means that really the indicated value, if you only made one adjustment to the land for comp two, should be around 3.4, and comp five should be around 3.3. And so that alone, when I look at the improvement value depreciated line, I'm seeing 1.4 and 1.3, both of those are lower than my, than the subject's improvement value, right? And one of them's a superior quality and the other one's bigger. So those are the type of questions that I have to look to my client and say, "I don't know. I don't understand. I don't know that, I can't fathom how we are being treated the same, and yet your value is so much higher." So I hope that clarified the second grid.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Wiggins. We'll bring it back to the board if there are any further discussion or additional questions. Steve?
One thing, or two things that would help me if it were spelled out. One would be the value per square foot of the construction, and sometimes that's, well, in the subject property, that's spelled out in both the assessor's page and on the subject The other thing that I think could help if we had a written out sheet would be the, I mean, if we are comparing houses that actually weren't sold but are in the neighborhood, then I would think the houses on Forest Lane would be the ones that we should be looking at. I agree with what you said, Scotty, and not looking at ones all over, all over the whole Wood Road subdivision area. But then I'm looking at, on the not a sale on the comp number two, and it's a similar square footage, the house is older, and yet the subject value came out at almost 3.5 million. And so I don't see, I mean, just looking at that one, it's in the same range as what you have come up with for the value of the subject property.
That's on the sheet that's not the sale sheet.
The not for sale sheet, yeah. So that's just looking at one, it depends entirely on which houses you look at and the condition you place on them. That one is listed as the VGT 13, so it's the same condition as the subject property, and it comes up with a similar valuation on the, and that's one of the ones that they're using to, that Mr. Wiggins is using to try to justify the lower valuation. And yet the valuation of that seems like it's a very comparable house, and it's, he comes up with basically the same evaluation that you did for the subject property.
Well, you know, and if I could just expand on, you know, some of that, the first thing I would say is that the two comp sale grids, you know, either the sales grid or, you know, the comparison, I would say that, to me, that doesn't represent traditional appraisal methodology whereby there are concrete, specific adjustments that are made for the different line items that affect quality. So I would say that the approach that is being employed here would not be, you know, something that would be, you know, in a traditional format model. And so I'm not clear, you know, exactly, you know, what to make of that. And for example, they look at the subject square footage, and he shows 5,720. Well, I think that's the gross square footage for the entire building as opposed to just the heated living area, where traditionally in an appraisal, adjustments for size are made, you know, for the heated living area, not inclusive of decks and garages and not heated living area. It's not clear, for example, you know, where there is a, I just have never seen a methodology quite like this, so I'm not really sure how, you know, to critique it, just because it is not, you know, a standard appraisal, you know, format. And so I would say that, again, relying on the adjusted sales grid that Scotty put together, which is done more in a U.S.P.A., you know, format, as far as making specific adjustments for specific line items, you know, that affect value, would be a better indicator of value, because I'm just really not sure, you know, how the math, you know, works on this, because, you know, it's certainly not the way, you know, one is taught when taking appraisal classes.
Any other comments?
I think we're questioning how...
Let me, let us just, we'll give you a chance if there's a specific question here, but let us finish our thought process here. Board comments? I mean, the comment that I have in regard to what Larry just said is that, you know, it seems to me like he's questioning some of the methodologies that we use and whether or not they're consistent on, you know, that we have a fair taxation across the board with one property to another. And I understand that, and I'm confident I've been through enough of these abatement hearings that, in analyzing each one of those, that you do have a formula that you work with on each one of those when you assess a property. Certainly there's some variance to it, and certainly we've made some adjustments to these, in these abatement hearings, because we felt, yeah, they could have, they could have looked at a property and said, "Well, this one's a little nicer than that," and there is a personal aspect to that. Yet at the same time, what Larry just said is, the argument is being made with the numbers that were provided by the applicant. There's no 100% explanation to where he made his numbers and his adjustments. So that argument is a two-way, double-edged sword in my mind. And because the applicant's making it to us, we could very easily go back and say, "Well, we don't understand where your numbers come from exactly, and did you do it fairly? And have you been assessing, you know, hundreds or thousands of properties in Picking County over the last, you know, umpteen years in uniformity and fair taxation?" Which I agree with and am sure is a part of our Constitution. I think that argument is well-made by the applicant. So that's kind of my response to what Larry just said. Again, we're back at the commissioner's table here with discussion. Is there any additional discussion or questions at this point? And if someone wants to make a motion, I'll certainly entertain it at this time. I'm sorry, George.
Yeah, I would make a motion to uphold the assessor's value. I think the argument that the petitioner is making in terms of using appraiser, appraisal value versus sales value is not a compelling argument for me. I think when an appraiser does any work, at least in this county, whether it's for a bank, for a loan, for estate planning, for divorce work, for whatever reason, those appraisals are done based on a sales market approach and not looking at an appraisal approach. And I think that's been consistent with the methodology. So I don't see a compelling argument to lower this rate. And actually, as the petitioner stated, we actually have some very close numbers that both have agreed on. The Staten property is very close, and Wood Run is only off by about 10%, which is sort of a given, sort of a norm. So with that, I would uphold the assessor's value.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion at this point? Steve?
Mr. Wiggins had wanted to make a comment and hasn't had a chance. Could he speak now?
If you want to ask him a question, you're certainly welcome to, Steve. You can ask him to come.
I wanted, Mr. Wiggins, I would like to hear what you had to say, because you were just on the verge of saying something in response, and I'd like to hear what you had to say.
Respectfully, thank you very much. In closing, I appreciate the board's comments, and I will say briefly that, listen, the appraised or the comparable page that I provided, those are in fact indications of market value. Appraisal under U.S.P.A. standards does allow the use of other appraisals as indications of market value. What's commanded by the Colorado law is that I use the market approach, which I did, to valuation. Now, with regard to your adjustments, there are primarily four adjustments that we need to consider, that the appraiser considered and that I did. Size, because number one, I'm only looking at the improved value per square foot, so I'm already indexing the size, and I'm adjusting for size by the very nature of the index. Age is the other one, which I make an adjustment for percent good or depreciation, the same thing as age. Land, which I adjust for land, the same thing as the appraisers does. Quality, I also adjust for quality based on the difference between the scheduled rates of quality that I found that was available to me through the assessor's data on the median for any given quality for improvement value per square foot. That's just what I applied. So respectfully, we are making the same adjustment, but if I could just say in closing, and number one, I would like to get on the record what the court cases that were cited between uniformity and market value, because I do believe those are indications of market value and should constitute, you know, a representative sample of market value. I don't believe it's a two-edged sword, because my adjustments are wrapped up. They are wrapped up into one very clarified on the main index, I'm going to take on that line that says IVPSF, improvement value per square foot. That's the starter, and you see that the subject is so much larger than the others, that's the starter. Then I make adjustments for age, and I make adjustments for percent good and for class, and the other two are taken care of. So all of mine are wrapped up. What I question is the duplicity, is the double adjustments getting me, getting us twice for the same variable. Now, we all know that, yes, that there's an experience that goes along with the assessor's been around a long time, but we also know that there are IAAO standards that command that we all be treated fairly, that we are on your schedule. I'm not here to argue whether or not they have an opinion that one is better than the other. What I need to know is that I'm being treated the same, and that's why those indications to me of these properties that were not, they were not selectively picked out. I went into the neighborhood of all, what the assessor declares as competing properties, and I found the closest in size. So that's where the indications came from. That's all I wanted to offer for the record. Thank you.
So we have a first and second. Is there any further discussion?
Oh, yeah, for sure, yeah.
Seeing none, I will call the question. All those in favor of the motion on the table, which is to uphold the appraiser's decision?
The assessor's.
The assessor's, sorry. The assessor's recommendation. I'll call the question. All those in favor say aye. And Mr. Wiggins, I understand you're representing this next one as well?
Yes, sir.
So again, we'll go through with staff presentation, questions and comments from the commissioners, your presentation, Mr. Wiggins, and then questions and comments for you, and then we'll bring it back to the board for discussion and determination.
Okay.
Scotty?
Okay. This next property, also in Wood Run, is at 67 Village Run Circle. It's 39, 89 square feet, built in 84, effective year of 1992, a little remodel. It's a very good quality of construction, and the value we have on it is $3,437,400. I use the same comparables. The thing about this property is that it is directly on the ski run that drops down by the Elk Camp Gondola. So you've got direct ski-in, ski-out access. I think the railtors like to call it click-in, click-out. And the property next to it, comp number one, at 41 Hidden Lane, has got the same ski access. So I think that's a very good comparable. Again, that was purchased in September of '11 for 4.7, time adjusted to 4.3. The adjustments for age and square footage were made, and the quality of construction, it's a better quality, so it's got a negative adjustment there. It brings it down to a value of 4.1 from its time adjusted of 4.3. Comp number two, again, Edgewood Lane, older, older house, smaller house, not as good quality. It does have good ski... It does have good ski access, but not direct ski-in, ski-out. Sold in June of '11 for 2.5, time adjusted down to $2,243, and with my adjustments, it comes up to $3,215. Sale Number Three, at 835 Wood Road, again, sold October 2011 for 4.8, time adjusted to 4.5. I have a land adjustment to positive, because it certainly doesn't have the ski access. A little bit older, so it's got a just, or younger, I mean, newer, so it's got an adjustment, negative adjustment there. A little bit bigger, it's got an adjustment there, quality, an adjustment there as well, because it's excellent versus very good, and that brings its value to 4.1. And then the 39 Stanton Lane, sold in September of '11 for 3.7, time adjusted to 3.4. Adjustment on the land, because it doesn't have the ski access. The age, I have a slight adjustment. It's a little bigger in quality, so a negative adjustment there. It's excellent versus very good of the subject, so, again, a negative adjustment there of $250,000, so we've got a value of 3.37. Again, the subject property is well within the range of the comparable sales with their adjustments, and lower than the median or the average price of these comparables. So I think that, especially sale number, comparable Number One, Hidden Lane, which is just one lane up above from Village Run, and, again, direct ski-in, ski-out access onto the same trail, you know, I think it's a good comparable. And, again, it's very well within the range, and I think that I'm comfortable with my
Questions? George?
So, Scotty, do you feel that you've got, or you've had an adequate number of sales for comparisons to come up with?
We had, in Wood Run, we had five sales. And I could have gone out to Ridge Run, and, but I felt that with five sales, that I was, I had enough evidence of value that I was supported in my value. The other issue that I had was that I was not able to get to do an interior inspection of the homes. We haven't been in these homes for quite some time, and it may be that maybe we don't have the quality right. But until I can get into the home and verify our data is correct, then I have to go with the data of record. So unfortunately, I couldn't get in, but, you know, I've been around those homes, I've skied so many times down that trail, and, you know, have been in the area long enough to know that I think the comparables that we have and the adjustments that we made, you know, for age and size are valid adjustments.
And then, so, I think the petitioner will probably come up with this argument again, but if you were to look at the neighborhood as a whole, from an appraisal point of view, what actually has been appraised for those homes, and then take the medium to come up with a value, that really doesn't take into account location, quality, topography, all those other issues. So using a medium approach really is not a very accurate methodology, it seems to me.
Well, when we do the appraisal and use the sales ratio, we come up with a median value that's applied to the neighborhood. And then, the homes, through the model and through the calculation, the algorithms, they are adjusted by the square footage and by the age and the quality and so on and so forth. So it brings into, I think my perspective would be, it brings into, in fact, that the median is going to be, and you've got your plus or minus 5%, which the state allows us to go, you know, above the median, below the median, that I think that's the fair way to value a neighborhood.
All right, thank you.
Let me just follow up on that question in terms of one of your responses. You said you have to use the data of record for the construction quality, because you haven't been into some of these homes. That's the very good, excellent T-13 plus. And those get that rating? How do they get their initial rating? At some point, somebody makes an assessment to that?
Right. When a house is built or remodeled, we have a sheet that we use for consistency throughout, where we rate the quality of all the homes. And so each home is rated based on that same sheet. So there's not my opinion versus Larry's opinion versus Dan's opinion. We all go by the same sheet, and it has.
Do they have marble in the kitchen? Is it that sort of thing?
That's correct.
Do they have, you know, wool carpets versus synthetic carpets? Do they?
Yes, yes. I mean, the interior, the kitchens, the, you know, do they have, you know, what kind of appliances do they have? You know, all of the, the quality of construction is considered in that quality rating worksheet that we use.
And as a follow-up to that, looking at the subject matrix that you have here and the first comparable of 41 Hidden Lane, you've got a very good being adjusted to an excellent T-13 plus. And as we just described, those have been indicated through a matrix from when the properties were looked at. So they're the data on record, which is what we have to go with. But my question is, you've got a, what I would say, a fairly specific number, 243,500 is an adjustment, 243,500 adjustment down to go from excellent T-13 plus to very good. How is that number derived? What's the formula that's used to get from A to B on that?
Again, we go into the model of the residential feature on the homes, and we plug in, so, for example, 41 is a 13 plus, 41 Hidden Lane is a 13 plus, I would go in and actually plug in a very good or a 13, and see what the difference is between how the model calculates that difference between it being a 13 plus and a 13. And I just make the addition or subtraction.
So when you say you plug, like, there's a calculator button and you press that button? I'm trying to ask what the math is for that. I mean, is it going from a T-13 plus to a T-12 plus? Is it $20 a square foot? And, you know, is that predetermined and used fairly across the board?
Yes. And the answer to that is part of our computer model. There are different criteria that affect value, quality, of course, being one of those. There's essentially a multiplier that is assigned to each level of quality. The higher the quality, the higher the multiplier, and it's a set percentage. I'd have to go to the table and look up to see what that percentage is, but any time you go from, and let me back up a step. The quality rating, even though it says 12, 12 plus 13, essentially, it's a scale of one to seven. So very good would be six on the scale of one to seven, excuse me, five on the scale of one to seven. Excellent would be six on the scale of one to seven. So the difference between a five and a six is X percent. And so simply, when you plug, you know, change the code from a five to a six, it applies that different percentage multiplier.
It comes up with that 243.
Correct. And that multiplier is applied to the size and age and all of the other aspects of the model. So times X percent generates, in this case, a difference of 243,000. But that's specific to that house, based on the size and the age of that particular house.
And who historically has generated the multiplier?
We do that, we do that in-house, in the assessor's office.
Okay. So every year, you reassess what those multipliers are?
Well, that's a.
To go from a five to a six, it's .2, and now we think that from a five to a six should be .18?
No, the difference that is applied, that's more of a set adjustment. And so the adjustment, the difference that is made is on a neighborhood-by-neighborhood The base price per square foot is determined on a neighborhood-by-neighborhood basis. Okay? So one neighborhood may be, you know, 500 bucks a square foot. Another neighborhood may be, Red Mountain might be, you know, 700 bucks a square foot. That base price per square foot, then, is adjusted up or down based on the criteria of the house. So going back to your, and this gets into the minutia of mass appraisal, but since you asked, you know, here we go. So, for example, a wood floor has a different level of value than carpet. Flagstone floors has a different level of value than wood floors. All of those different criteria, we have attributes for the types of floors, the types of walls, the types of heat, et cetera, et cetera. And all of those things affect, you know, the multiplied, the end value of the house. When you change the quality rating from a five to a six, that higher percentage then is applied to the cumulative multiplier of all of those different attributes. And so when you change one house from a five to a six, it's going to generate a different size of adjustment based on the size, quality, attributes of that house than it will for another house, which has a different collection of attributes associated with that house.
And those formulas are used across the board uniformly with all cases?
That's correct. As I said, each neighborhood is determined kind of neighborhood-by-neighborhood. And as a follow-up to that, every revaluation cycle, the assessor's values are audited to make sure that the non-sale properties are behaving similarly to the sale properties. In other words, we're not just adjusting the sales exclusive of all other properties in whatever neighborhood it happens to be. And that is one of the tests, is to make sure that there is uniform application of those tables for all properties in a given neighborhood. And one neighborhood isn't, the non-sale properties are not being treated differently than the sale properties. I think they've had problems in the past where counties may have made adjustments and dialed in the values to the sale properties and just didn't change anybody else. And so it created a disparity between the level of value for the sale properties and the non-sale properties. And now they test for that. And so we have been audited for every two-year cycle, and since I've been here, starting in 1991, and we have successfully passed that audit. So a lot of the concerns, I think, that are being voiced as far as whether other properties are, whether properties in a given neighborhood are being treated equitably, to a large degree, I feel like that has been answered by virtue of the fact that we have been audited and have successfully passed that audit.
Okay. Ask Steve.
Scotty, if there weren't comparable sales in that same subdivision, would you then look at, say, along Faraway Road for sales? And if there were no sales there, would you look at Horse Ranch or somewhere else, or single, or there's single-family houses?
I would, I would, yes.
And then you'd have to adjust for the location being different there?
That's correct.
And when you do the, the quality of the construction on this subject property is very good, was that determined when the remodel took place in 2000?
That was determined when the last appraiser who was inside the house was, that they made that determination.
Okay. Now, I just happen to have been, they had an open house in a lot of houses on Snowmass and Capitol Creek. And I ran into one of your compatriots there, because it was a chance that he could get in the house.
And that's another time that we can do that.
Now, are there any other times you can get into a house, like at the invitation of the homeowner or anything?
If they're, sometimes during the NPL period, if they feel that we don't have the correct information, or they're willing to let us in and we haven't been in for a while, if they'll let us in? Sure, absolutely. So during the tour, invitation of the homeowner, during remodel, and during new construction, all the way up to when it's completed.
Okay. Because I had noticed that you hadn't been inside the house recently, you actually looked at the condition of it. But then the condition wasn't really objected to by the petition in this case. So they accepted what your appraisal of the condition as very good?
Well, I'll let him answer that, as to the determination of my being able to get in.
Okay. I'm sort of at appraisal 101 level of learning here, so.
Additional questions of staff at this point? Seeing none, Mr. Wiggins, if you'd like to make your presentation on this application at this time?
Thank you. Applaud the board, whoever was the beginner there. Great questions, great questions. You're well on your way to appraisal understanding. It sounded good, so. Thank you, panel. No, we don't have any questions about the condition and quality. I'm well aware, the client has plenty of personal property that is held private, and that's the bottom line, that's the answer I got, so I wasn't, I personally wasn't allowed. I had to do exterior inspections, too. And the answer was, she said, well, does the assessor get to go inside all the houses? No. You know, typically, we have to do, you know, in assessment work, we have to do exterior inspections. She said, I want to be treated the same as fair as everybody else. I said, I understand, you know, no problem. So that's the explanation as to why. And it'd be nice if we got inside everyone, but we don't, and I understand that. So, no, we don't, we don't take issue with the subjective opinion of the appraiser. No. My issue will remain a very objective or quantitative difference of opinion. So, look, it may be the best comp on 200, let's see, 002140 or 41 Hidden Lane, because, yeah, I understand that it's, you know, it too rides under the, or adjacent to Elk Camp, you know, and I get it. But, but look, the adjustments are made for the land, right? That's the difference. And so, and we made the same adjustments. So I don't want to get into the discussions about that, because we are echoing the adjustments for the difference in value for location that the assessor's making. I want to point to Stanton Wood again. But first of all, let me comment on the assessor. He has said that these are set adjustments for the difference in quality. I want to talk about that, but I'm not accusing anyone of chasing, but if you go, but, but look, I personally perform Chi-Squared and Man Whitney tests, and that's not included in the audit system at Colorado, unless it has to be, unless you do get called out for an audit. But I've done those, so I'm well aware of the changes in characteristics on the sales sample to the population. I, you know, I understand, and that is not what's in question here today either. So I want to be clear about what I'm trying to bring to the attention of the board. If you turn to page seven on my comparable sheet, yes, these are appraised value, but the line item that I want you to look at before I engage the sales discussion is improvement value per square foot. I can't, I can't fathom away that the improvement value per square foot for Comp. Number One is $63 a foot, and we're just talking about the improvement. And, say, for Comp. Number Four is 98 a foot, right? Or three, or five. I don't, I don't see how, there's so many things underneath the improvement value that is creating such a vast difference for these properties. And, you know, those two that I cited, for instance, those are 12, and that's a base, but, you know, $63 compared to 260 on the subject is, you know, that's almost 20% of what the improvement value per square foot is. So it's hard for me to envision how that is on a scheduled, like I say, what constitutes fair? If everybody's on the schedule, then we're getting treated fair. But I don't see how that's possible if they have a $60 per square foot value in the improvement. So let's look at the, let's look at Stanton and Wood. Those, the reason I point those out is because those are the two that the assessor has used and that I have used. On 835 Wood, and I want to look at the assessor's grid, the net adjustment is down 371 or 825. That is, Comp. Number Three is superior by $371,000. And let's just stay on Wood, and we'll go look at Stanton here in a second. But the 371 downward adjustment, 835 Wood, when you look at my page six for 835 Wood, my downward adjustment is 1.6 million. So that's a difference of opinion and value of superiority of 1.3 million, okay? And I, now, I want to take you through these adjustments, because I went ahead and talked to you this time for this hearing. And let's just start with the living area. And again, I'm only going to talk about Woods, so I'll be brief. And again, I'm only going to talk about Woods, so I'll be brief. But the difference of 3,989 square foot on the subject and 4,904 square foot on comp number three, that difference is 915 square foot, okay? And divided into 251,625 gives you an index of 275, $275. Now, I'll go ahead and tell you that that's the same index that's used on the, on the size adjustment for comp four on Stanton. 275 bucks a foot, and that is for size, all right? Now, the adjustment above that is for age, effective year built. Now, notice that comp number three and four are the same quality. They are excellent, right? So the delta, when we put it in the system, and I want to talk to you about that, that linear equation, but when we put it in the system as a, as a very good or as a subject, right, then the differences in years should be at the same rate too, at the same scheduled rate as well. But the fact is, on comp number three for Wood, I'm getting $19,000 a year adjustment from 1992 to 2003, okay? That's a, that's a nine-year difference into the, into the 178,400 square foot. And I just want to double-check my math, make sure I'm not, not off here, but 178,400 divided by nine years is at $19,000.
It's an 11-year, isn't it? 92 to 2003?
Okay, thank you, yep, thank you. Then 1992 minus 2003, yes, 11, excuse me, thank you, divided by 178,400. Yeah, it's 16,000 a year. And for the other, I guess it's 1992 to 1998. It's six years divided by 91, 4. It's about 15,200. So 16. Again, so those aren't set, those aren't the same. But that was only, that was just after I found this big difference. And I, and I appreciate that the size is the same. I, I believe that now, so now we've said, okay, the land is dollar-for-dollar, we're making the same adjustments, and it's a set adjustment for the size, no doubt. The age is a little bit different, but, but as for the quality, for there to be a 291,800 difference for excellent to very good, that's 318 a foot, right? And on the other one, for the 259,000 for Stanton, 39 Stanton, 259,100, that's a $445 adjustment per foot. So, so yeah, as I try to make the adjust, the assessor's adjustments, at least get on the same, same field, same, same playing field so I can look at the adjustments that I made for these differences, yeah, they're very, they're very different, and that's a, that's a concern. And again, I'm only talking about the sales and how to adjust these sales. So yes, this does blow down market, the market approach always blows down to two things, your selection of comps where they're available, and the quantity of your adjustments. And so where I, where I find fault is that how can I be, how can I adjust 39 Stanton down 1.1 million when they're adjusting it down 100,000? So my, my big differences are just that. I am only using one, one figure, you know, for each of these. It's a difference based on, on the, on what I found for the difference on their schedules or their, what is most common for these quality of constructions, or what is the median value per square foot, improved value per square foot, and that's what I apply. But it's consistent for me. It's, it's, you know, it's the same in these, in these grids, but it's not, I don't see it as the same on the assessor's grid, so. You know, and I appreciate that it may not, it may not look like the assessors with, with the pictures and everything, but with regard to use path and what are considered appropriate adjustments, I am adjusting the big four, right? Location, age, quality, and size. I am, I'm accounting for all that. So again, I, you know, comp, comp number one that I used on my, on the Village Run Circle, it, I, yeah, that's not the best comp, but I used what was available to me when I did my search for sales. Comps two and three, though, number two in particular is a similar size, it has a similar land, you know, it's, it's newer, and it's a better class, and it's selling for 3.4. So it's clearly superior, selling at 3.4. Now, number three is, is very big, but there is a similar land, and it's also newer, and it's also a superior class at the 4.5 range. But, but again, for me to make those, those consistent adjustments, it's hard for me to, to get off of what is that median indicated. And I'll toss out, you know, I'll toss out comp number one, and I'm still somewhere between 2.3 and 2.9 on, on comps two and three, the ones that the assessor agreed with. So you say, "Okay, well, let's just look at those two, and why are they so different?" And it is the quantity of adjustments. But as I do the math here, the big one being, you know, what I, what I feel again is duplicity because, look, this is the final thing I'll say, at least for this portion of the hearing, but it, it is complex, the math principle, but it is also just a linear equation. It is only ever the size of the variable, i.e. the size of the house, times the coefficient, which is whatever the rate or the scheduled rate is, 100 bucks a foot, okay? Plus V2C2, whatever the size of the land is, plus the size of that, of, times the coefficient of the land value per square foot. Same deal, same for garages and all that. So you put all that in one big bracket, V1C1 plus V2C2, so on and so forth, and then you multiply it times a factor. Just by that nature of going in and inputting a new coefficient, right? Yes, the factors distributed. So the model, when it pumps out a new value, if you do that for the first time, and the second time, and the third time, you are now, you're not duplicating that quantity over and over again. I believe that the embedded nature of this, of this, what is simply a linear equation is the fact that they're using to say, "We're going to change one of these variables, and then we're going to use the total difference in value, and then we're going to plug that in. Then we're going to go back in and change this and use the total value difference, and we're going to plug that in." To me, that is what, that is what the error here is, whereas I know for certain that I'm only doing this one. Okay? That's about how I can describe it.
Are questions for the applicant at this time?
I have a question or kind of a comment, which is, you know, obviously I'm, and again, this is Commissioner Itner, obviously I'm kind of, every time I go through these, I learn a little bit more and I ask a little bit more questions. And I, and honestly, I leave very confident with the system that we have. And I, and I think one of the, the arguments that's been made by the applicant in, in the previous case and in this case is that taxation should be fair and even across the board. Yet at the same time, the applicant seems to be making an argument that historically we've used this calculation formula, not perfect, but gives you a range and gives an appeal process and all that for all these houses. And then he's using a completely different formula, you know, or determination for, for his property that makes it lower. And, and we could use that formulation, but I think the argument that he's made is that we have to use that formulation for all the properties, which potentially would lower the assessed value of all the properties in the entire county across the board if we used his math for, for various things, which in essence would create a tax deficiency for the needs of operating the county, which in essence would make the Board of County Commissioners probably raise the tax percentage or mill levy for everybody, which in essence would get us back to where we are today, which is people paying the same taxes. So I understand the argument of, you know, the fact that the math may not be perfect, but I do believe that the math is consistent and fair across all the properties that we assess, that the formulas that are used with our, with our assessor's office are used uniformly across one property to another property, therefore creating a comparison between properties that, you know, again, not perfect, but with some level of consistency, therefore allows us the ability to set a taxation level that meets the needs of public safety, roads, schools, and the other, the other taxes that have been put in place in this, in this county to provide for the quality of life that, you know, the, the policy setters, the Board of County Commissioners have determined. So in essence, what I'm kind of saying is I, I understand the argument that's being made, but I'm not sure I necessarily agree with it. So I'm, I'm curious, and I'm going to give the opportunity for Mr. Wiggins to respond to that.
Thank you, sir, for the opportunity. I, um. My concern, you're, you're correct, is for trans, is for fair treatment. I don't, we don't in the assessment world get into taxation. That's, that's, of course, for all the others. We, we only worry about value. My regard is for standards of mass appraisal that have to be applied consistently. And there's, there's no way, there's absolutely no way on page seven that you can tell me when you, if you go to page seven and you look across at the improvement value of these comps, these are all, these are all properties that are, you know, Bridge Lane, Edgewood Creek, Creek Lane, all in, in the same neighborhood code. These are all similar land values, right? There's no way that I can justify that these are on this so-called same schedule. The schedule guarantees the integrity of taxation to fairness. There's no way that the improvement value for the subject can be 1,37,400, and for comp one, the improvement value can be 260,000, or for comp four, it can be 395,000, right? There's just, there's just no way that, that, that's possible. Because these, these houses are not that difference in size. And if you say it's because of the quality, then I, I have a sore, I sincerely disagree. And I say, "Well, show me." And then when I, and then when you do show me on the sales grid, when you show me the, the difference in quality or the quantity, I'm finding that there's, it's vastly different. It's almost 50% different on, from comp three and comp four. It's, uh, it is, yeah, 318 to 445. So yeah, that, that, then I start to raise red flags here. Well, okay, you know, I don't know what to say to my client. I don't know what to say, I, I can't tell you what, yeah, I wish, I wish that, that we had an improvement value of 400,000 or, or, you know, 500,000 too depreciated, but we don't. Now, now, whether or not, you know, we're going to set loyalty or we're going to entertain this approach where I'm looking at these other appraised values, yes, sir, that is precisely what I'm not, that's precisely what I'm talking about. And I'm not asking you to break into a whole new methodology of mass appraisal. I understand the error that's embedded in any mass appraisal model. I, I totally get it. But, but what I hope for is that I'm treated the same, that I'm part, that I'm a part of a schedule, right? And I feel like up here, there's a lot of interim use in this, in this subdivision, which is very tough for mass appraiser. It's very tough to handle. But, but hey, it can't, it can't be treated with, you know, some people get a low improvement value and then others are on the schedule. It, I just can't, that's not, that's not a, that's not a solution. But that's what I'm seeing as an issue. And, and I'll maintain that I, I believe on, on this page seven that these are indications of market value, but what I'm gravely concerned with is the, the quantity and the calculation of these adjustments. How, how is it possible that these, that my neighbors can have such low improvement values and yet we, we are maintained at such a high level?
George?
Scotty or Larry, would you just respond to that last argument in terms of the differential between the, the adjustments for the square footage differences, the vast differences?
Yes. One of the things that's difficult to see, and I think it would take a little bit more in-depth analysis as far as the explanation, as far as why there is a, a different price per square foot on the different homes in the same neighborhood. As I was saying earlier, there are multiple factors that go into the calculation of value. And without looking at all of those factors of all of these properties relative to one another, it's difficult to say what are the criteria of one property that are driving the value up, excuse me, driving the value up versus factors in one of the other properties that may be driving the, the value down. For example, we have found in our market that, that it is appropriate to apply a different rate of appreciation based on the quality of a house. We have a fair number of what we like to refer to as scraper homes, and we find that older homes of lower quality have a shorter lifespan and are more likely to be demolished than higher-quality homes. And so depending on the quality rating of a home, there is a different rate of depreciation that is applied to that home, lower quality versus higher quality. So that's one factor. As I mentioned before, without going, there are different rates of value that are attributed to the types of floor. It could be that the house that has a low price per square foot has carpet. It could be that the house that has a higher price per square foot has hardwood floors or flagstone. And so without going into the minutia of each different property to determine what the pluses and minuses are of each one relative to the others, it's a little difficult to say why, you know, there's a different rate of price per square foot attached, you know, to each one. Another factor, again, and Mr. Wiggins, correct me if I'm wrong, but I think the area that is being used is the gross area of these homes as opposed to the heated living area. Another thing that we have found in our model is, for example, if we're using 100 bucks a square foot for a heated living area, garages are only valued at 60 bucks a square foot. Finished basements are valued at 70 bucks a square foot. Porches are valued at 25 bucks a square foot. All of those different areas of a home contribute value at different rates. And again, without looking at the minutia of each and every one of these properties and the factors associated with each of those properties, it's a little bit, you know, to just off the hand say that they're the same quality, they should have the same rate. Well, not necessarily because the underlying attributes within each of those properties could be, you know, far different. And so those are the things that contribute to the range and value associated with these properties in the same neighborhood.
And one last question, because Mr. Wiggins keeps on coming up with the, the need to be able to explain to his clients, which I understand. So given, let's say, the previous appeal and perhaps this next one, what's, what's the, what sort of recourse would the applicant petitioner have if they want to pursue this further?
If they are, and I'm sure Mr. Wiggins knows this if he had worked in Routh County, but if they're not successful in their abatement appeal, petition today, they do have to, the right to appeal the decision today to the Board of Assessment Appeals, you know, which would, and, and so the appeal can be carried forward, you know, if they choose.
Thank you.
All right. We're at the boards table at this time for any additional comments or questions or a motion.
I would make a motion to uphold the appraiser's valuation.
Second? We have a first and a second. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much, Mr. Wiggins. The assessor's office will be sending you a letter, I guess.
Actually, I think, you know, the board will send out a letter, a notice of determination that, that spells out the, you know, the rights to appeal and so on.
Good deal, thank you much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next on our agenda is the Snowmass Club. And are we going to handle these together in the sanctuary at Snowmass?
Yeah, and as I said, you know, when we first came in, well, maybe just a little bit of the backstory, these properties had been protested via an abatement in 2011. At that time, we signed a stipulation agreeing with the tax agent, agreeing to adjusted values for the subject properties at that time. Since then, they have filed abatements to rehear those same tax years in the position of the assessor's office in consultation with the attorney's office, is that once the property has been adjudicated via the earlier appeal process, you basically get one bite at the apple. And so we were recommending that it be denied from the standpoint that they had already agreed to set values for that tax year 2011. Tax year 2012, which is the second year of the two-year valuation cycle, should be the same level of value as the first. And so since they agreed to a value for the first year of the two-year cycle, the second year should follow at the same level of value barring any changes to the property. It appears that this is a legal issue as to whether or not they have standing to come back and file an abatement for 2011 and 12, again, having been through the process once on those properties. And so they have sent me an email and said that they would request an administrative denial to allow them to go to the Board of Assessment Appeals where that, that legal question, you know, could be answered as to whether or not they have standing, you know, to file an abatement again for a year that they have already protested. And so they are not appearing today, either in person or by phone. They are just requesting an administrative denial so that they can go forward.
So our approach is to granted administrative denial so they can move forward to the next appeal process.
Correct.
Any further discussion? So any further discussion or would someone like to make that motion?
I'll move for administrative denial.
Second.
I have a first and a second. Any more discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And the final one on our agenda today is the Motherlode Investors. And I understand there's been a change to this application.
That petition was withdrawn.
So you don't even have to discuss it.
Correct. It's off the table.
Great. I will take a motion to adjourn our special meeting.
So move.
Second.
First and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Scotty, Larry, thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you.
A little bit early for our lunch. We'll be back here at one o'clock for the rest of our agenda. Do you want to make?
Could we have an executive session today to discuss personnel matters?
We can, although we've got some attorney issues today, Michael, because John Ely is out on a personal matter. Chris Selden is traveling. Laura is here if we have attorney questions.
I don't have any, any questions. This is strictly a personnel matter, so I don't have any questions for the attorney.
So it'd be questions just regarding among the board?
Yes.
Do we need to have a legal presence during a personnel matter?
No.
Let, shall I go up and just discuss this with the legal's office and maybe go into an executive session during our open discussion?
Yeah, if you feel like that.
If that works.
I would just like to have.
Sure, we can call an executive session whenever.
Okay.
So, but you, are you recommending that we have?
I don't think so, Ken. I thought executive sessions have to be noticed.
They have to be, yeah, they do. They have to do.
I'll get the information, but your recommendation is that if we do go and do an executive session, that it would be just the board and recorder?
Just the board, actually just the board.
Well, it has to be recorded somehow.
Yeah, recorded is fine.
Yeah. Okay, I will talk, I will go upstairs at this point, talk to the, to make sure that we're compliance with everything, and then we'll discuss it during our open discussion.
Okay. Great, thank you.
I believe it's a twin door. I don't know. There's some legal counsel.
We're in our work session, agenda for Picken County Board of Commissioners. We are going into our afternoon agenda after doing abatement hearings this morning. Our first item on our agenda is a request from the Aspen Historical Society.
Can I stop you?
It's not from the Historical Society. It's from?
The Four Rivers Historic Alliance.
Yes, the Four RHA, the Four Rivers Historic Alliance.
Rob, before we get into the item, Laura Makers here.
Oh, yeah, let me do this first while you're down. I'm sorry. We're going to put, squeeze one thing in because there was a request for an executive session, if you don't mind, just to take a few minutes here.
Yeah, my understanding is the board was looking for a little advice on what's required to go into executive session for a personnel matter. To move into executive session for a personnel matter under 246402F requires no, advanced notification to the individual whose personnel matter is going to be discussed prior to calling the executive session, because that individual does have a right to request an Open Meetings Act for that discussion. So any individual you would like to discuss does need to be notified ahead of the executive session. There is no requirement that attorney be present. My advice is that an attorney would be present. I don't know the details about what exactly you want to discuss, but I would caution you that you do need to notify an individual before you move into executive session. And that personnel matters can't include discussions of a board member or general personnel policies. It needs to be specific to one individual or specific named individuals.
And the notification requirements for that are, is it posting in the paper, is it a certain number of days?
There's no specific requirement. It just is advanced notice. My recommendation would be actual notice to that individual, because there are cases out there in which the individual did not receive actual notice, and the executive session minutes have been held to be public and anybody can access them because there wasn't actual notice to the individual.
Well, maybe I asked for the wrong thing.
Okay. I don't know exactly what we're looking for.
So I'll talk to you later.
Okay. And I'm here all day.
After the meeting, not before, not for something that would be handled today.
No, apparently not. It's too complicated. Little did I realize our business would be complicated.
Maybe we could take it up next week, one of next week's.
Well, however Michael wants to proceed in terms of him wanting to direct the board into an executive session. Because I don't know, I mean, some people may know what the issue is, but I don't know what the issue is, so.
Well, I'm here all afternoon, so.
Okay, thank you very much.
All right, so now we're back to our regular agenda.
Thank you for that little brief interruption. So this is funding for the Four Rivers Historic Alliance. And generally with these things, we have a staff member give us a little bit of background, but I guess you're welcome to do that and we'll go from there. Some of our staff were out today unfortunately on some personal matters, so.
Yeah. Hope that all goes well.
And just for the cameras and stuff, you know, state your name and.
Okay. My name's Lisa Hancock, and I'm here representing the Four Rivers Historic Alliance. I'm the current vice president. Darrell Munzel is a former vice president of the organization. The Four Rivers Historic Alliance was formed as a directive from the Board of County Commissioners when the Aspen Historical Society received our loan, emergency loan in 2005. One of the items stipulated was that we form a coalition of historic organizations in the valley to collaborate and work together. We've taken that very seriously and done so. Pip Hubbard, who was with the Historical Society at the time, organized the group and brought the member organizations together. If you look on the map, you can see there's, we go from Parachute to Eagle to Aspen, everything in between, Glenwood, Carbondale, LaSalle, and up to Redstone. Thus the Four Rivers, Roanoke, Crystal, Colorado and Eagle. So they sat down and discussed, this is before I was involved, what they could do as a group to better all of the organizations, and the thing that came up was marketing. The map idea was based off of Colorado Tourism. They do maps and signage, and they get counties together to pay into this project, and then they match some of the funds. That whole thing has kind of fallen through because they were charging twenty-five thousand dollars per site for this. And, you know, we looked at it and said, we don't, nobody can afford that. We don't want to do that. So we decided to put together our own map based on the map that Colorado Tourism was doing, because frankly, just so everyone here knows, at the time, there was kind of a donut hole in the middle of the state where Picken County and Eagle County were, that was not represented on any of their regions for Colorado Tourism. Since then, we've been included, but that we weren't even in their system. So we did the map. We published last spring, was our first time. The budget I put together shows you the printing expense for the first map. It was forty-one cents per map. This time, we printed again this spring, and it was thirty-five cents per map because we did a larger printing. We wanted to, hopefully, Picken County was interested in contributing for next year's, for the spring of next year, so we have seed money for that. Because most of the money, as you can see on the budget, comes from our membership dues, and every organization pays in a hundred and fifty dollars per year. And then we got some grants from other, from chambers and towns and different organizations, as well as some advertising, which came from the Aspen Historical Society, the Frontier Historical Society, and then two for-profit businesses that are historic in nature that were included. And we were hoping Picken County would want to support this group that back in 2005, they asked us to put together.
Questions? George.
I have a question, just regarding the loan. How is it that the county is able, was able to give a loan to another entity? I wasn't aware we were able to do that.
It's a good question, George. I don't know the answer to that.
It's paid back, just so you know.
Right, but it's more of a legal. It's more of a legal question in terms of the county. Just as, as public, public funds, do we have the ability? Obviously, we did have the ability to do that. I'm just curious, and our attorney's not here right now.
Michael?
Well, my recollection was that it wasn't a loan to the Four Rivers.
No, it was to the Aspen Historical Society.
It was to the Aspen Historical Society, because they had experienced financial difficulties and were experiencing financial difficulties. And the plan of action was to form a special district in order to provide secure funding for the Aspen Historical Society, and which indeed happened. And as far as I know, they paid that loan back with the proceeds from the mill levy that they, they then had.
Okay, so similar to how we gave money to form relations with Woody Creek Special District.
Similar, except there was a payback.
There was a payback, okay.
So, so, so that's, that's my recollection. So it actually had, you know, the link between, the difficulty I'm having is the link between the Four Rivers Historical Association and, and the Aspen Historical Society. Apparently, they're two different things, and so I don't know. So.
Let's ask that question. I'd like to ask that question. How are the two connected at present day? Are they two completely separate nonprofits?
Yes.
Does one parent the other?
What it is, is the Aspen Historical Society was the initiator of forming the Four Rivers Historic Alliance, again, because of the county loan and the stipulation within. And it was a good idea. It's not like I'm blaming anyone. I think it was fabulous. Then, once it got up and running, the Historical Society is just a member. We're just, you know, I serve on the board, but I'm not the president. The president is Kathy, what was her last name?
Hiker.
Hiker from Eagle County, from their Historical Society. Cindy Hines from Frontier Historical Society is the treasurer. And actually, I think Jackie Spuhler is the president, and Kathy is the secretary. So there's, it's just an organization that's operating on its own two feet now, without the Aspen Historical Society driving it. We all have the equal voting rights, and we're just a member of it now, so.
And the extent of Four RHA is just this map, or is there, do they do a lot more?
We do. I think that's been the main, and it's taken, you know, it's just an organization of mostly volunteers. It's taken a lot of time and effort to get the map put out. But the other thing that we have done is because we have a full-time paid staff, I've done site visits to different museums gratis to help them look at their conservation needs or their organizational needs to do assessment visits. So I went to the Mount Silpris Historical Society, and they asked, they got the Thompson House, they had some conservation issues, and I gave them some low-cost methods, as well as what you really would want to do as best practices. I also went to Rifle and met with them. They have since, they used to have a Historical Society and a museum, which were two separate entities, and they neither could get funding. And not, I'm not taking full credit because they did the work, but, you know, saying this is crazy, you're a small town, you need one institution. And they've combined, and now they've gotten funding from their city government to redo their building. I mean, they're really doing great. Selt is doing great. They've, Selt has had a lot of new members and energy put in because they see what other organizations are doing. And that's really the role of Four Rivers, is to look at what everyone's doing and get ideas and get momentum and solve problems, and that's what we've, we've been doing.
Lisa, do you have any additional background on the, what do you call the stipulation of creating this organization? I mean, was it a requirement of the loan? Was it a suggestion of the loan?
I think it was.
Was it, and then more importantly, was it, you guys, with the loan and the new taxing district, should that taxing district support this organization? Because now you're saying the taxing district doesn't have enough money to support what we kind of mandated to try to get set up.
Yeah, and I don't think the language in the loan, and we would have to look at that closely, said that it was to support this. We look at it as only the Aspen Historical Society is in the tax district who is a member of this organization. So other, other counties and other chambers and other towns have all contributed. So we just looked at, this year, I, Aspen hadn't done anything, other than the Aspen Historical Society being a member and advertising. And I just said, I'm going to approach the chamber, because other people were approaching their city governments, their chamber governments, their county governments, and I just said, it's time for us to do that. I approached the chamber, and they gave us two-hundred-and-fifty dollars, because it is a promotional piece. And I'm approaching you guys with a higher ask, because I thought it was just an appropriate support for this organization that.
Yes.
I might add a little bit. Darrell Munzel, I am a board member of the Redstone Historical Society, and I'm vice president of the Mount Silpris Historical Society, and I'm also a member of the Four Rivers Historical Alliance. First of all, I want to really thank Pittkin County officials for really, really supporting I attended the memorial, the centennial anniversary memorial of the Ludlow massacre this past weekend. And it was a big crowd. I got to talk to a lot of people, and several people said, oh, I visited Redstone here not too long ago. And those co-governments, oh, they were impressed with it. They, they just thought that this was a marvelous project, and certainly Pittkin County played a very important role in the restoration and stabilization of those co-governments. And every time I drive past the heavens, there are cars out there, people wanting more information. And so the co-governments is a really important point of attraction for Redstone. And the Four Rivers Historical Alliance was organized in part to coordinate all of the activities for heritage tourism of, of the communities in our district. I shouldn't say district, but in our area. And we certainly, in addition to printing the map, which has been a great success, we are also engaged in other aspects of organization and coordination of all of these communities. Mount Silpris Historical Society has been talking with the Garfield Commissioners in connection with the possibility of forming a recreational district that would help with tax money, with the tax levy, to support historic preservation. Now, this would be mainly in, of course, in Garfield County. But we hope, the Four Rivers Alliance members hope to really help to push that and to really bring about greater cooperation among all of the communities and the counties in this alliance. So I think the Four Rivers really plays a very, very important role in these efforts, and we hope to be even more active in the future, and I think we will be.
George?
So the, the request for us now, is this just a one-time request, or is this going to be a ongoing request, every time you need to do a reading? to be a ongoing request every time you need to do a reprint?
No, my, I'll have to answer that. We haven't, as a group, discussed it. Everyone sort of goes to their funders, local funders, as they feel it's necessary. I wouldn't re-approach Picken County for probably at least three years to help funding for this. We've gone through, and it's been really successful, the map. It, it, everyone says it just flies off the shelf, people love it. And of course, it's free. It's, it's handed out at portals on I-70, at Parachute, at the Rifle Chamber of Commerce, at the Eagle County, Breast Stop, and also at Independence Pass. So that any portal into the area has these maps to drive the tourism there. So they're, you know, they've been really highly sought after. We go through them really fast. But we don't have advertising. We don't have, it's not one of those maps that's done with someone goes out and gets a bunch of businesses to advertise, and then it looks, you know, you have a map this big and you have gigantic ads everywhere. That's not what we were after. So we need support. You know, we can spend most of our membership dues on it, and that's what we have done in the past. But we thought it'd be nice to have the seed money so that we can use our membership dues to do some other projects for the next printing, for next spring.
And then can you also tell us who else is contributing and to what extent? You've mentioned the chamber here.
Yeah.
But you also mentioned you have counties, other counties who are supporting.
Well, it's not counties yet, I don't believe, but it's towns and other chambers have contributed. If you look on the map, there's a sponsor list in a brown box on the map part. I believe it's on the right.
Thanks to our sponsors.
Yeah. And that is the list of all the entities that have contributed. It's in the brown box. Aspen Chamber, Eagle Chamber, Town of Eagle, Town of Basalt, and I think actually Garfield County, didn't they?
I think Garfield County has.
Yeah, and so I don't, they didn't make it on there somehow, you know.
But for last year's, they contributed.
Yeah.
And do we have an idea in terms of sort of the range of the...
Contributions?
Contributions?
Well, if you look on the income, the budget, the grants, that adds up to $1,475.
So it's the grants and advertising?
No, just the grants.
$1,400.
And if you look at...
I'm not sure where you're seeing that.
Grants number one and grants number two for the two printings.
Oh, I see, both grants, both grants, yeah.
Yeah. And then the advertising, and what we did is there's two for-profit businesses that are historic, like the Redstone Inn. We asked them to contribute to be on the map because it's appropriate that they're on the map. They're, they're as much a tourist attraction as they are a business. So they contributed. And then there are several organizations that are listed, like the National Mining Museum and Hall of Fame in Leadville, and the Colorado Ski Museum and Hall of Fame in Vail. And they contributed to be on the map, but they're not members in the organization. So we've been trying to be fair and make sure that if you're represented, you are paying into it and helping pay these printing costs.
Yeah, so you've got a total, as you said, about 1,450 grants from these sponsors. And your request before us now is, is for $2,000.
That's correct.
Which is a substantial amount above and beyond what all the current sponsors are doing.
Yeah.
And we actually have, well, we have, we have Redstone, which is, which is a gem. But, but we also have many other parts of the valley and beyond.
Mm-hmm. And you, and just you have Arboni Barn and the Kilns.
Right.
That are in Picken County, as well as the four Aspen Historical Society sites.
Arboni Barn is actually in Eagle County, I believe.
Is it?
Town of Basalt. Yeah, anyway.
I thought they were Picken County. But the, the four Aspen sites, that both ghost towns, the Holden Marult Barn and the Wheeler Stollard Museum. So, yeah, frankly, we've asked organizations for grants, and usually we get half of what we ask for. Thus, they ask for 2,000, hoping we get 1,000. But that's just, you know, the way it works. But the, what we really hope is that you, as the Board of County Commissioners, see what we've done and are pleased with it and in whatever level would like to support it.
And for the Board's reference, there are a couple of funding sources that this can come from. It could come from our discretionary fund. We also have the, the strategic fund for, which deals with economic development. We put the money towards the Maroon Bells Party from that fund. So just, so that there's a reference as to where the money might come from.
Well, I, I mean, I, I'm supportive of it. I think, I remember when Georgia Hansen came before us a few years ago and talked about the, the idea of heritage tourism and, and the, the potential for that. And this is actually, I see this as one, one aspect of, of that heritage tourism. I, I'm just not sure I'm comfortable with the, the $2,000 commitment, given where the level of other sponsors are.
Michael?
Yeah, I, I support, in general, I support this. But, you know, I think we need to clear up the loan, the formation of the Historical Society, and any obligation we have. And my view is that the loan may have had stipulations, but the loan is paid back. And, and the Historical District was formed. So as far as I'm concerned, that's history and not, not relevant to this, actually. It leaves us under no obligation whatsoever. In fact, the, you know, the Historical Society should be well-funded at this point.
But is, but Michael...
But I'm not, let me just finish this. So that's my view. It's not, I'm not here to argue it. I'm just here to give my view. So, so that's, I think we, that's what I'd like to put aside. Now, support of this is a different thing. And I think, you know, mentioning that we have a strategic fund and that we've already committed $5,000 to a, to a celebration of the Wilderness Formation of the Wilderness Act this August, you know, that seems like a good funding source for this. And so I could support, I could support funding this from that strategic fund. Because I do think it actually leads to economic development in almost a straight line. So that's where I'm at.
Steve?
Lisa, looking on your, your accounting sheet here, it looks like last year's stuff is all paid for, the printing, the first printing, is that right?
Yes, and the second printing.
So then if we look at, if we separate it out, this year's total cost would be about $3,000 for the second printing.
Mm-hmm.
Approximately. And then you're anticipating some advertising money you don't have yet, but you have approximately $2,000 that you anticipate. So you're coming up maybe $1,000 short on...
Well, let me just...
On your budget? Or did you have money left over from last year's also to put in?
Yeah, the, we've already paid for this printing. What I'm asking for is for next year. So we know how many to go to print with. The main driver for this is that you see when you do 5,000 maps, they cost 41 cents each. When you do 7,500, it's 35 cents each. So we get a better deal. And we're just trying to be economical with knowing what money is coming up as opposed to doing it last minute and just scrounging for, trying to decide, oh, let's, we can, we can scrape together enough for 4,500 maps. This way, if we had funding in there, we know exactly what we can do and then go from there and try to get a, you know, better price.
If you raise more money, you could print more maps.
Yeah, and then maybe we wouldn't even...
And then not have to print them so soon.
Yeah.
Okay. Could you explain the, the thing about the non, non, or the parts of the county that are not within a taxing district, like Redstone, for instance?
Well, Redstone having their own Historical Society, the, when Georgia set this up, it was the Aspen Historical Society that was floundering. And this was before I was back on board. I worked there from 90 to 2,000, and we had a staff of three people who now, who did what nine people do now. Now we're more professionally run. We have a better program. We do a better job at our ghost towns and all of our sites. Our archives are, you know, our exhibits are winning awards. We're a very nice, quality, professional-run institution. Whereas in the 90s, when I was there before, we, it was a scrounging, trying to pay the electric bill. And literally one time, I said, is there any pins? And they said, don't order any, we have no money. I mean, that's where we were. So the, the, I kind of lost the thought of the, of that question because I got off on my little rant there. But the, the organization is, is now healthy. I, I did lose the...
So then, like, do you, but there is no, in Redstone, for instance?
Oh, right.
There's not a taxing, a historical taxing district?
There's not a taxing district.
It's just a volunteer organization that you have there. So the actual Aspen Historical Society covers a...
Yeah, and we are...
A limited geographical area here.
Right, because of the, I, I don't know why it was set up that way, but it was set up in the boundaries of the school district. So the, the special district is the boundaries of the school district. And that is actually our collection, collecting boundaries as well, although we do have stuff from other, from Redstone and Glenwood and Basalt and in the collection. But we try, like, we wouldn't take a lot of objects from those, but we have photos and things like that, so.
Looking at the, I mean, I, I think $2,000 is too much of an ask. I, I support it also. I think, you know, if you get enough different town governments and get some of the other counties to pitch in some, and I was going to suggest we promised $500 as, you know, what we could give this year. And that would be kind of a challenge then to Eagle County government, Garfield County government, and, you know, some other to, you know, step up to the plate and put in some support. Because looking at the map here, it goes clear over into, I don't know if that's Lake County, the place is by, okay, Lake County, Gunnison County.
Yeah, the membership is all on...
Garfield.
Garfield, Eagle and Picken.
Eagle County, so it covers a, a big area of counties.
That we actually included Lake and Gunnison County organizations just because it, it made sense for the map. It would, it would just be...
Like you're doing the loop.
Yeah, to do the loop. And then, you know, if you're at Redstone, Marble's only up the road. So, but they're not members of the organization, just to clarify.
And we wanted to coordinate with the byway, scenic byway.
Yeah, I was just going to, I was just going to ask that there. Are there any funds available through the scenic byways or to tap into or piggyback off of printing when they, when, when they do their maps? Is there some sort of economy scale?
We haven't approached that.
This, I might say that this idea has been brought up, and it's something that we need to pursue. Because we did on the new map mark the byway, scenic byway. And I, I have talked with them a little bit, and they certainly are supportive of our efforts, but we haven't really approached them as far as financial support.
Yeah, because you have the scenic byways, which, which is not this entire area, but a portion of it that is doing their own map, driving tourism, you know, to the communities along a scenic byway. So you've got one map here, you've got another map here, you've got, so it's pretty soon you become overwhelmed. And you, I always wonder about the shelf life and people picking it up. One day, the next day, it's out in the trash because they have so many different maps.
So there's a proposal on the table by Steve for a $500 sponsorship. I'm assuming that would be from the strategic fund. How does that sound with the others?
I can support that.
It doesn't sound like enough to me. I mean, really, we gave $5,000 for a party.
I would support $1,000.
That would be, you, you do have a point, Michael. Putting all that into, in a one, one event thing, I mean, this actually promotes, you know, promote tourism in the area.
The work that they're doing, the work that we do to support the historical nature of our community as a tourist attraction. As, as Michael said, it's a direct line to economic development for, for our, specifically our summer travelers that drive by and might pick up this map as they're coming over the, over Vail Pass and say, oh, let's go check this area out. They stay a night or two and, and it pays it back, so. I would like to see it to be a sustainable thing going into the future and part of, you know, maybe a little bit more additional advertising, a little bit more spread of reach of, of sponsorship or membership or those sorts of things, so.
I, I know I have a problem with that. But I'm wondering, see whether we can help you out in a way in terms of getting other counties to contribute. And I wonder if we committed $500, they'd have $500 for additional matching funds. Would that enhance the ability to, for you to, to go out to Garfield County, to Eagle County, say, we've got a matching fund from Picken County for 500, up to $500? I'm just throwing that idea out.
Yeah, if they get one other county to do $1,000, we go up to $1,000.
Yeah.
You guys are the fundraisers.
I can't answer for... I can't answer for how the politics are in Garfield and Eagle.
If you read the paper today here in Aspen, it worked in Aspen with the Maroon Bells. When we put in our $5,000, Aspen stepped up and put in more money to bring the ticket prices down. And that was part of our conversation was we want to see Aspen come back with a little bit more to bring the ticket price down. And I'm sure that came up in the media last night, so.
I don't see why, why we don't put in a thousand, say, and, and this organization says, listen, Picken County put in a thousand. They only have four sites at Picken County. You guys have more sites. And therefore, we think that it's justifiable that you put in the $1,000 or more. And I, I think that's the way we leave it. Because that's essentially what we did with our $5,000 grant to the Wilderness Workshop, so.
So it looks like we've got approval for $1,000 out of our strategic fund. You can make note of that, Brian. And, thank you. I think you're doing great work.
Thank you.
This is a big part of what our valley is about, so.
It's really been a really positive experience, I think, for everyone involved. Everyone's pretty excited about it. You know that when you go to the meetings and everyone shows up, so.
And I agree with you about all the stuff in Redstone. It's amazing.
It's a treasure. And we're trying to get people on I-70 to come this way.
Yeah.
Great, thank you.
Thank you a lot.
Great.
Next, we're going to go into memos of interest. The one set item that we've got in our MOIs is a supplemental request. And is Kathy going to come or are you handling this?
She is in a, a training right now, so I'll handle this item.
Okay, so it's a supplemental request from our Solid Waste Center. And Brian, you want to give us the background on this?
I'd be glad to. This, we have made this request before, and it's really an operational issue that ought to be in our normal budget for the Solid Waste Center. I'll just start out by saying this. And what happens is we divert aggregate and soil from the landfill, we accumulate it in a large pile. And we've done that. And we charge for the material coming into the landfill initially. The board approved that cost to go up to $12.50 a ton. That will happen June 1st, so very soon. Once we get a, a large pile established, then we bring in a crusher through Heartland, our contractor, to crush the material into three-quarter inch road base, you know, four-inch minus crusher fines. And then a, we're providing like a one-inch screened rock this year. And then we sell that product. And so right now, we've got a pile at the landfill that's in excess of 65,000 tons. It's a, it's a small mountain. Really, the pressure right now to crush this mountain and provide the material for sale is the landfill is in a transition right now, where we have been placing trash on the working face and growing a, a large amount of trash. We have hit the maximum amount where we can, of growth in that area. So in about 12 months, we will cap the area we're in and move to where the aggregate pile is right now. So bottom line is, we've got to move that aggregate pile in short order in order to provide space for trash to be placed. So that's the operational issue that we're working around. From an aggregate recovery standpoint, this is a financial winner for the county. It cost us $7.39 a ton to crush this material. We make it up in the material coming in the landfill initially. Anything... Anything we sell is just additional revenue. And so Kathy's done a good job of breaking out the different products that we can sell here and how much revenue we expect to make in 2014. If we don't sell it all this year, it just continues to be an asset that we carry in inventory, and we'll sell it in future years. But that's what this is about.
Let me ask one question about some of your figures, because something new kind of popped in my head since our conversation. How many tons did you say we've got on that mountain?
Right now, we're just, just over 65,000 tons. Different people have different, it's, but it's a large amount.
And this sales, um, calculation for 2004, 14, does that account for selling the entire 65,000? Or does this create an excess inventory that could be sold in '15, '16?
The latter. It will create excess inventory that we will sell in future years.
So in essence, when this says that there's an aggregate, there's a, there's a projected revenue of $289,000, we're also creating an inventory that doesn't necessarily carry it on our books as an asset, but we can sell that inventory in, in '15 and '16 to potentially make back even more money.
Absolutely. And some of the material will be used to close the, uh, the, this lift that we're doing right now, because we need to put final cover on that and get it to a place where we can then move the aggregate program up on again. So we'll use a lot of the material onsite as well for closure.
And I believe that there was some, um, conversation about when we approved the, the fee collection, that there was an added benefit to that as well, because the stuff doesn't go into our landfill.
That's correct, so.
So it increases the length of our landfill.
Yeah, it probably, of, of any recycling program that we have in the landfill, this diverts the most material from the landfill itself. So it allows more, uh, longer landfill life, far more than any of the traditional recycling, aluminum, plastic, glass.
George?
So then, Brian, back to your earlier comments, why it wasn't this or, or will it in the future be part of the annual budget? Because it seems like you're going to be needing to, you're going to be gathering aggregate every year. It's going to be the need to crush it and, and utilize it.
It should have been there. It will be next year. This should be in the annual budget. It's an operational cost that we can predict.
But let me ask you, is it an annual thing or is this like every couple of years, potentially? It'll be in the long-term budget.
Yeah.
But not necessarily, you know, if we crush it this year, we might stockpile for a year or two before we hire this service to come back in.
At the rate it's coming in now, it's been an annual event.
Okay.
Yeah. It just, if the 12.50, it's kind of a wait and see, because we've increased the price to try to reduce that amount of material coming in. So we'll see what happens this year, but I think it will be an annual event to some level. Hopefully not to this degree.
Uh, Michael first.
So what's the supplemental request for then? For $680,000? And what's that for?
To crush a, a mixed pile of soil and rock into usable products so we can sell to the public for a multitude of reasons.
To contract a service to do it.
That's right. That's correct.
And, and you're expecting revenue, subsequent revenue from that?
Absolutely.
And so, so you have the 65,000 tons. You don't expect that to be sold this year? So, so the issue of the, the aggregate or the stockpiling is in one place and needs to be moved from that place. How did we accomplish that within this, within this budget here? I mean, you're crushing, it's there, you're selling some of it, but it's still there.
Right. And so in the crushing process, we're going to relocate the pile. So as they crush the material, it will be trucked to an area away from the area that we need for trash burial. Does that make sense?
Yeah, sort of. I mean, normally you just drop it there and...
That's right.
You wouldn't, the, the less you handle the aggregate material, the better off you are. There's costs associated with moving it. In fact, there's greater cost value in moving it than there is crushing it, so.
Either way, when they're, in the crushing operation, it's not like the material is placed in a pile out of the crusher. They're moving it to some level. They're just going to have to move it a little further now.
Right.
Steve?
Yeah, my question was similar to that. I presume the big pile of uncrushed stuff is closer to the face of the landfill that you need to use, but would you have to move any of the existing aggregate, aggregate and dirt piles also to make room for the, the expansion of the landfill portion?
Some of it will need to be moved. I'm hoping that some of that material will be used at the landfill itself. So we'll bring it up and start to use it for closure. And start to...
And then, do you have a, a space to be putting the new, the next new pile of, uh, stuff coming in that is not crushed yet?
Yes.
They have to be put farther away, but is, is there a, like, a spot reserved for that already?
There is. It's a, it's an interim solution until we can get, uh, an intermediate cover on the top of the trash where we are right now. Then the full aggregate program will move up to that site. And that will be, it's hopefully...
Permanent, permanent aggregate site. Up on, clear on top.
That's right. And hopefully we won't have this problem again.
So then the composting and the aggregate stuff would all be up on the completed top?
That's correct. And that's the long-term plan for the landfill. That's where it's targeted to be placed.
Move it once, so you don't have to move it again.
That's right. That's what we're hoping.
George?
So in terms of in-house accounting, so Roden Bridge has some projects slated for this coming summer, it's going to need aggregate. So does Roden Bridge purchase that from the landfill, or how does that work?
They have. Uh, in cases where the landfill has had excess material, it's provided at a reduced fee or free. Uh, the, I think this year, the Roden Bridge Department's going to be paying the cost of the crushing itself, so $7.39. But if the landfill gets into a bind where it's got excess material it needs to get rid of, the roads are a great place to place that material, and it's to the benefit of the public and to the county itself. So it's a little Peter and Paul issue.
Yeah. Um, it, it's a great program, and I actually asked Mike Andrews last night at the caucus meeting about the price of the aggregate that, and he said they can, that Roden Bridge can get the aggregate way cheaper from the landfill than, than from Elam or somewhere else. And therefore, they can do more work on the roads every summer for the same amount of money, so.
That's correct.
Um, I'd be perfectly, they don't, I agree with, uh, crushing it this summer. It sounds like something that has to be done.
And ironically, a lot of the material that's being crushed is from the roadside ditches off the banks that slough, so.
Further comments? Some nods of heads. Looks like across the board. I, I would just kind of say for the record, as I've said in the last supplemental, that we do have a bigger picture that needs to be presented to us. And some, some pieces that have kind of been put off for further decisions about the budgeting of the entire waste center. We just approved a supplemental budget last week or the week before for $165,000 for a study, a match for a study for our wastewater treatment up there. And we're, just changed our recycling aspect, and, and at some point in our work session, we need a bigger picture put together. But it looks like you've got approval across the board here for this one.
We will bring that back. We'll order a picture.
Uh, future agendas. Um, Brian and I and John met yesterday. There are some things that are shifting around on future agendas that I guess I'll go through real quick here. Um, one, on May 27th next week, um, make note that we are going to have an executive session in the morning at 11 o'clock. Uh, then we have a, we're going to do a brown bag lunch for memos of interest. Um, in addition to the MOIs, although there are no MOIs listed there, there are some additions that will be added to that. One, we have to do an EOTC prep meeting, um, because we have an EOTC meeting on the 5th of June. And we also have to do a City of Aspen prep meeting, because we have a City of Aspen, um, meeting, joint meeting on the 10th of June. So those will be added. Uh, the site visit got moved to the afternoon to accommodate for the, the acro schedule in the morning. Um, so our, following our presentation with the East Timor people, we will be leaving to go do a site visit at the Aspen Valley Ranch, and that works for people's schedules on the 27th. Although it isn't a noticing process, on May 28th, the celestial stuff is still not on that agenda, um, but it will be that day. I believe there was some last-minute filing that people had to do, so somehow it didn't get on our future agendas for that.
That is correct.
But it is still planning on being on that day. Uh, Tuesday, May 29th, the Coal Basin Partnership Tour. I asked, um, you know, why exactly is that noticed? It was just in case people went. People are going to be responsible for RSVPing on their own and going or not going on their own.
And Rob, that's actually Thursday, May 29th.
Oh, yeah.
The date's right, the, the day is wrong.
Yeah. Um, so it was just in case more than three of us showed up there, but it's not really a, a meeting for us, um, at that. Um, June 3rd meeting has been canceled. Uh, Thursday, the 5th at 4:00 in the Aspen City Council chambers, we've got the EOTC meeting. Um, and that was the extent to the discussion that we had with John Peacock, to my recollection. Brian, do you have anything else to add on that?
That is it. So we talked about having, and I'm not sure you were there, Rob, having an executive session a week from today to discuss housing.
So that would potentially be within our executive session after the county attorney's evaluation?
Correct.
Okay.
Rob, so why is the June 3rd meeting canceled?
Um, I'm going to be out of town. Rachel's going to be out of town. Steve's going to be out of town.
Okay. You can meet if you want.
Did anybody else have any other additions?
All right. Open discussion.
Did you have anything, Brian?
I do not.
Any commissioners? George?
Brian, did you have an opportunity to meet with MRI about the recycling down in Basalt and...
That meeting is tomorrow.
Is tomorrow.
Yeah, so we will talk about, uh, timing of when that site is open to the public.
MRI or waste management?
Waste management.
Waste management, yeah. Thank you, Michael. Uh, we talked about the, uh, timing of when the site's open, customer service and presentation there, and then also battery recycling. So to talk about what, what they would need to provide that and make a request.
And then also, are they thinking about going through single stream there at that site or no?
That will be discussed as well. So, uh, my question is, why are they providing all the separation at that site and not providing it single stream? So I'll be, bring that back after we talk to waste management.
Yeah, good.
Steve?
I was, uh, we've taken to going to Willett's site to drop off our stuff and, you know, put it in the separate bins. And I was talking to an employee there about, I asked him, there's single stream bins over there, kind of parked behind. And I said, well, can we bring single stream in here? And he said, no, that's what they picked up elsewhere to load to go to Denver. He, they actually prefer to have the stuff separated, and they're going to continue. I think that's what they want to do, continue separating it into the different bins there in, at Willett's. But maybe one of the things to ask them, if somebody does bring in single stream there, I think they should provide us a bin to put single stream stuff in also.
Thank you.
Uh, in hauling it to Denver, they'd rather have a whole load of cans and bottles, or the co-mingled, as they call it, take it over there. And then their sorting over there is much, much simpler and more efficient for them. I think is their reasoning.
Yeah, it, you know, the site at Willett's is, it's a transfer station where they do some pre-sorting before they send it out. But it'd be great if we had that alternative for people that didn't sort to be able to dump it as well. So that's the avenue we're going to proceed with.
There's actually, um, more sorting needed at the Willett's site than was previously at the Basalt site.
Interesting.
Yeah, because they got a bin just for glass, and then they have a bin just for plastics and aluminum.
Well, they were co-mingled.
Uh, yeah, well, it's pretty confusing, so I'm sure there's, I'm sure it's, everyone is, is confused in terms of what goes where, and they're sort of running around here and there. So anyway, it's, it seems to be a little more complicated now.
Okay. I'll bring that issue back to the board then, too.
Any other open discussion from board members? Seeing none, I will, oh, Michael?
Uh, did you get a letter from Bennett Branson?
I did get a letter from Bennett Branson, and, uh, it was regarding, uh, some, having a, a meeting with us to some extent or talking with us. And it was referred to, um, I referred it to the attorney's office, um, regarding the, um, potential litigation that might move forward or not.
Yeah, I, I just sent it on to John to deal with this.
Yeah, I had him responded.
Yeah.
Um, I know Bennett personally, and I did go talk to him briefly. It does, the issue does have to do with the Snowmass Creek litigation, the road litigation with the Brothers property. And I talked to, uh, John Peacock, John Ely and Laura yesterday about, about that to let them know what I had discussed with them. So it's a matter, and John Peacock had meant to send out an email to all of us just saying...
The attorney's office.
Warning us to, you know, it's a, it has to do with the legal thing.
Well, I, I, we should, we should try to develop a policy on that, because I, I think what people's goals are is sort of divide and conquer and, uh, and get the story they want to hear from one or two commissioners. So when you have a, I think we need to decide, those letters need to be referred to John or, or either John, rather than getting discussions. Because four of us or five of us getting into discussion with Bennett is just not fruitful and not good for him and not good for the county.
And frankly, it's, it's, anything with personnel or anything that's in litigation is not appropriate for us to be discussing regardless.
Right.
I would probably add potential litigation as well.
But he didn't, he didn't actually...
I know.
You know, the, the problem was it was a veiled letter, I thought. Uh, I didn't know what the hell he was talking about, quite frankly. It could have been anything.
Well, you know, he, it did mention personnel.
Yeah, it mentioned, uh, it mentioned somebody in the county that we should know about.
Yeah, so right, right away, that's...
But that's still veiled.
It was a red flag for me not to be discussing it.
Which is why I sent it on to John.
Yeah.
So I, I think we need to treat those letters carefully and not individually.
I agree.
Is this an issue that ought to come back to the board for discussion, so we're, we're abundantly clear on how to handle those in the future?
Uh, I think maybe you should address it with, uh, put a note out to the attorney's office to maybe update us on this particular issue and how to address it.
Got it.
It'll probably be a two-minute discussion.
Yes.
But, but, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
But just in terms of policy, I think it's a good idea for us to have that discussion with the attorney's office.
Yeah.
Yes.
Yeah, no, I agree.
So maybe do both?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, and Rachel apparently had forwarded that email to the attorney's office right before she was running out, you know, running out to Alaska. Or maybe already she was in Alaska and just sent it on to them. The attorney's office probably should have notified all of us right away or, you know, sent something out.
Uh, any other further discussion? Seeing none, I'll call the meeting adjourned. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Brian, for stepping in today.
Thank you.
Appreciate that.